Good evening and welcome to the Cloverdale City Council. It is currently 6:01 on April the 14th. Thank you so much for being here. Just a couple of things that I need to read before we get started. All members of the city council will be participating in the regular meeting remotely by teleconference. As listed below, please refer to the end of the agenda for instructions related to public comments and participate in the meeting. Essentially for those on Zoom, whenever we open up for public comment, please use the raise hand function. And Irene or myself will recognize that you have public comment to offer and will call upon you. If you're just using your computer, or I'm sorry, your phone, please dial a star nine. And the link to get to the Zoom meeting is included on the agenda, which can be found on the Cloverdale website. And you may also offer your public comment to Irene. Her email is also included on the agenda, which is located on the Cloverdale website. And this is all in pursuance to Governor Brown's executive order, which is in here N dash 29 dash 20. So again, allow me to welcome everyone.
Think that might be Governor Newsom, Mr. Mayor.
Gavin, Governor?
You said Brown.
Brown, sorry, Newsom. You are absolutely correct. I don't even know where Brown came from. I haven't heard anybody talk about him in a while. But anyway, I digress.
He was governor a lot. So you're, you get past.
Yeah.
He was his father.
He wasn't born then yet, Gus.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not turning red here. Anyway, we'll go ahead and move on to the pledge of allegiance. And Todd, would you be so kind as to lead us today?
Absolutely, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And who is a public, but we could stand.
One nation, indivisible, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
That the decision will have a material financial effect distinguishable from the effect.
Hearing some background noise there from somewhere, I think. Oh, nope, it's gone away. Okay, great. All right, next we'll do a roll call. I've been led to believe that Vice Mayor Cruz may not be able to join us. I'm not seeing her on. Irene, if you please.
Councilmember Bagby.
Present.
Councilmember Lamb.
Present.
Councilmember Walter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cruz has an excused absence. And Mayor Turner.
Here. Thank you, Irene. Any conflict of interest declarations for this evening? Hearing none. I'd also like to make sure we welcome our student liaison this evening. Summer Lands is with us. Thank you for joining us, Summer. Any changes or addition, anything to the, wow, let's try and get her in the game here. Any changes to the agenda, please, David?
Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to take the opportunity for council if they would like to, to acknowledge this week as National Telecommunicators Week?
Don't get ahead of me. I'm doing that next.
Okay, great. That's otherwise, no, no changes to the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Absolutely appreciate it. So yes, this week, as folks may have noticed, is Police Dispatchers Week or Dispatchers Awareness Week. And I just want to take a minute and honor Caitlin Jensen, Tammy Lemley, Michael Newhall, Carolyn Peterson, Lori Smith, Darlene Stratton, and our Police Technical Services Manager, Linda Webb. I've had two experiences in my life where I've had to call into an emergency dispatch. And one that really comes to mind was I was working for a tire center that resides in Runner Park. And they used to interchange inventory between different stores that they had. And I was, I was sent to a place I was unfamiliar with. And an accident occurred in front of me and I was kind of the first upon the scene. And I won't get into the details of that because it took a while to get over it. But I ended up calling 911 and had no idea where I was. I was about 18 years old and just, there was no GPS on my phone at the time. I think it was one of those LG slided on up, but definitely no GPS. And the, the abilities that dispatchers have to keep you calm in an otherwise insane situation and pull the information that they need, despite how little you know, as many years ago as that was, I will never forget that experience. And having done two ride alongs with the city of Cloverdale's Police Department and being invited in to kind of see how all that goes down. It's amazing how these dispatchers can grow arms that were not there before in order, in order to multitask. And, and really just, really do amazing work. I mean, I could go on and on, but I'm not going to. But at this point in time, I would like to ask if our chief, you know, if he would have anything he'd like to add in honor of our dispatchers this week.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I really appreciate you recognizing all of them tonight. I just, I would like to add that their efforts unfortunately often go unnoticed because they're not out in the public like the police officers are. And, you know, but they are true first responders. They're the ones handling those calls. And oftentimes they work alone in the dispatch center. They're handling multiple incidents at any given time, monitoring seven different computer screens. And I'm pretty confident in saying most citizens who call in really don't have an idea how many things have to take place at one time to sort out the call, log it into a record system and then dispatch it to the police officers. And that's just for police related calls. It doesn't include medical calls, fire calls, telephone calls that they handle from the public, and actual 911 calls. To put it into perspective, they average about 17,427 police related calls, 1,746 medical calls, 60 fire calls, 23,284 telephone calls, and 1,076 911 calls per year over a three-year period. And that's not, that's in addition to the handling warrant entries, report preparation for the DA, numerous contacts of a public lobby that they have to handle, and many other duties. It's too many to mention, really. But they certainly deserve the recognition tonight and I appreciate the opportunity to add to your opening comments, Mayor.
Thank you. And David, seeing as how I interrupted you, Mr. City Manager, would you like to add?
I just want to echo Chief Ferguson's comments and the tremendous amount of calls that our dispatchers, dispatch team handles. You know, it's, it's, it's pretty, pretty amazing. And there's, you know, it's in fact that there's only, only six dispatchers that serve the entire city. And we also serve as a hub for other cities in Northern California. So it's, you know, quite a bit of work that our, our team does. It's highly stressful work. And they really are the first, first responders in many cases because they're the ones that receive that initial call and then have to dispatch it to, you know, our police department, our, our fire district or Cloverdale ambulance. And, and they're, they're often, in addition to dispatching, you know, providing that, that handheld guidance to the folks on the other end of the phone line. And it's, it's a tremendous job that they do. And I'm just so thankful we have a great team in our, within our police department. Want to extend a thank you and gratitude for the work that they do. So thank you, Mayor, for opportunity to comment.
Thank you. And seeing in the spirit of speaking, anybody else want to offer any additional comment? Otherwise I'll move on for now. All right, thank you. Next, we're going to get into public comment. Any person wishing to speak to the city council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any items on the, sorry, on any items on the council agenda during that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. As I had mentioned before, this is kind of that opportunity for the public to hit that raise hand function or dial star nine if on the phone. And we're happy to hear any public comment that may wish to be offered. Let me see here. It looks like Mr. Wayne Diggs has his hand up. All right, Wayne, I think you're with us. You can go ahead and unmute and offer your public comment when you're ready.
Okay, I think we should be on now.
I can hear you.
Thank you. I'm really happy at this moment to acknowledge the work that the city of Cloverdale has performed in the open space area up behind us here in Clover Springs. I'd like to really thank you guys for listening. And this is the first year where you have really done one heck of a job or your staff has done one heck of a job in mowing the, the main paths and the bottom area just above the parking lot. That makes all of us in Clover Springs and probably the entire city should feel a little bit safer. Those of us on Sonoma Drive, the 10 of us that back up to the open space are certainly appreciative of your efforts. But it's a good start, but I just really hope that for some, in some way, shape or form, you could have your local fire department, if you have a fire prevention officer or someone who is knowledgeable. The, the fuel load along the main trails is enormous. There are many dead trees that have fallen down in the last couple of years, which are just piles of brush. And if they were ever ignited, and these are directly adjacent to the main trails, if they were ever ignited, it would be much worse than just normal, you know, forest areas because of the dead trees. I realize that you can't do everything. I did want to thank you very much and acknowledge the fact that you did get up there and did a lot of mowing this year. So again, if possible, please have somebody that's knowledgeable about fuel loads walk up the main creekside trail. It's only, you only have to go a half mile or three quarters of a mile up from the parking lot. And you'll see numerous large dead trees laying alongside the trail. Thank you again.
Thank you, Wayne. I appreciate it. I really appreciate the positive feedback as well as the, the feedback related to where we could address some issues. And we have been continuing to work closely with Fire Chief Jason Jenkins and a really tremendous fire district board. And we will, we'll keep that partnership alive and utilize his knowledge to get in there and take a look at that better. And I think we even have a presentation from Fire Chief Jenkins that we're trying to line up calendars for. So again, thank you for your comments and your, your voice was definitely heard and will continue to be. Let me see if any other hand, oh, David, did you want to add anything to that? I kind of took that away from you there.
Thank you, Mayor. You're absolutely right. We're coordinating with Fire Chief Jenkins on a presentation to council at the next meeting on April 28th to provide an update on fire safety practices. I think it'll be beneficial for our, our community and our residents on some of the things and actions they can take to, you know, address fire hazards in their immediate vicinity of their, their homes. So I ask everybody to tune in on and, and receive the presentation. If you have the opportunity, I think there will be a valuable update. And I also want to acknowledge that our park maintenance lead, Hector Galván, has been coordinating with, with Cloverdale Fire on a vegetation management proposal to address the, the open space. And we'll be bringing forward that for council's discussion as part of a budget workshop on, on May 5th. Obviously it comes with a cost. And so we'll be looking at that and how we can further address some of the concerns, you know, expressed in part by, by Mr. Diggs.
Awesome. Thank you, David. Let's see if any other hands have gone up here. Not seeing any. We'll go ahead and close public comment. That'll take us into our proclamations and presentations. And I'd like to open up with, oh, forgive me, Melanie, please.
Sorry, just to add on to that, and I can, I can restate it in future agenda items too, but just so that it becomes, you know, part of the plan moving forward, you probably also need to include the Northern Sonoma County Air Pollution Control District because they are working on the challenge of fuel load reduction as well. And Mayor Turner is now a member of that board, but it was something that I was working on in previous years. And I would imagine that they would need to be looped in at some point as well. Because they're, they're looking for policy changes and looking at ways that they can help cities and the county address fuel loads in both public and, and private properties. So let's just make sure that they become part of that conversation as well.
Yeah, David, I think that's a great idea. We can make sure to kind of chase that down as we move these efforts forward. It's awesome. Thank you. All right, it's going to move us into our presentations and I'll kind of turn it over to Summer Lands here for our student liaison report, please.
All right, thank you. Okay, so in honor of Cloverdale going back to school this week, I thought I'd kind of give you guys just a rundown of how the schools are operating right now. Because it's, it's very organized chaos right now, but we're doing whatever we can do. So starting off with the high school, they have, as of right now, two different groups. One's last name's A through L and then M through Z. And each group goes two days a week, Wednesday being our distance learning day. And as of right now, it's going pretty smoothly. There are not as many students as we expected to come back. So they're allowing some different exceptions, say like a class only has 10 kids, those kids can come all three days. Do, it's, it's possible. All still getting as many kids in schools as can. Middle school also has a more system. However, they do have an opportunity to get all four students, all four dating for every student, just due to the dropping off and picking up of the younger kids. But as of right now, they're working out a system where they're gonna say, you know, this parent's here, you can send this kid out just to keep that distance and also keep the traffic flowing. But since there has been a little bit of traffic, especially around, you know, where you enter from Quick Stop into Jefferson School, they're thinking about having parents walk to get their kids just to make it all safer and easier. But as of right now, everything's going as planned and we're just hoping to continue to get more and more kids back for more and more days.
Awesome. Thank you. You, you cut out just a little bit there, but I think we, I think we grabbed the, the main parts of it. It sounds like school coming back. There hasn't quite been as many kids as were anticipated. So different kind of exceptions are being made. And there's some learnings with pickup and drop off that are being overcome. Awesome. Are there any other questions or comments for our student liaison? And that includes the public. If you'd like to raise your hand. And I'm looking here, not seeing any, anybody. Okay, thank you, Summer. Appreciate the update as always. That's going to move us into a proclamation and we have possibly some folks joining us today for this. And do you see them on yet, Irene?
No, I don't see them.
Okay. No problems. We're going to go ahead and read this proclamation as April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. So the city council proclamation recognizing April 2021 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has a profound and lasting impact on every community member of Cloverdale. And whereas national research indicates that one in five women will be raped at some point in their lifetime and nearly half of all women will experience some form of sexual violence. And whereas one in 17 men will be raped at some point in their lifetime and one in five men will experience some form of sexual violence. And whereas young people are at greatest risk of sexual violence and youths aged 12 to 17 are two and a half times more likely to be raped or sexually assaulted. And whereas disabled people, people of color, LGBTQ people, homeless people, transgender people, undocumented people, and people of other marginalized identities are even more likely to be victimized by sexual violence. And whereas with leadership, dedication and encouragement, there is evidence that we can be successful in preventing sexual violence through increased education, awareness and community involvement. And whereas the city of Cloverdale strongly supports the efforts of Verity and encourages every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts to end sexual violence, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with crucial counseling and other support services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. Therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Mayor Jason Turner, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Cloverdale. And this city council so reaffirms its commitment to address the issue of rape and sexual violence by remembering victims, supporting survivor, for survivors, holding perpetrators accountable for their actions, and challenging societal myths and behaviors that perpetuate sexual violence in our community. And thank you for, you know, kind of having that prepared and everything. And I realize this is probably a rather close to home issue for, for a lot of folks right now. And I just want to take a minute and feel free to take a minute. But if anybody would like to add anything or, or share anything during this moment, I encourage you to do so. And that can be city staff as well, anybody, members of the public, anybody.
I just want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing this forward and, and reading it out. I think we need to hear more men step forward and read these kinds of proclamations. And I just kind of want to say in light of recent news, I get, I, I, what I, what I, what I want to say is that these are just the ones we know about that have been reported lately. And for some reason, it, the, the women who were victimized by a local political leader felt that they couldn't come forward. It shows a pattern over multiple years and it's a failure on all of our parts to not speak up and to not make sure that this is something that ends, I think I'm, I'm going to steal, I'm going to steal your, your thunder, your statement, Mr. Mayor, when we were, you know, talking over the last couple of days, is that really, it needs to end now with this generation. And we need to have proclamations like this that are not just symbolic, but this is also an opportunity, this is an opportune time to, for us to come forward and talk about how pervasive sexual assaults and violence are throughout our society and what are the contributing factors to that. So I'm proud that we're having this proclamation tonight. I'm proud that we're talking about it. And I look forward to moving forward and being, being supportive of the victims and saying no more. It has to end now, in all, in all walks of life, in all areas, whether it's work or school or elected officials, anywhere. It's just not going to be accepted and we're going to move forward and, and seek justice and try to, and hopefully change our behaviors because that's what needs to happen.
Thank you. Any other comments at this time, please, Mr. Walter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, just to ditto what Melanie said, you know, it's, it's really very timely that April is sexual awareness and assault month. There's no excuse for that type of behavior. It just doesn't belong in our society. You know, we as elected officials and city employees have a sexual harassment training that we have to take. And with or without that, one should recognize that's very poor behavior. And as we look to the south at the city of Windsor, you know, they're doing a meeting tonight, a special meeting to make some recommendations. So, you know, I only hope that it has a positive outcome and, and I only hope that there are no more victims out there. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. I'll give one more call out for any comments or any hands that may wish to go amongst the community. I think it is now frozen. Yeah, please, David, go right ahead.
Just like I did, the proclamation acknowledged the, the work of Verity. And I just want to share with the council and, and the community that Verity provides a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week hotline. It's available anytime for anybody to call if they want to express or share any concerns that they may have. That phone number is 545-7273. Again, it's, it's a confidential line. It's maintained with, with the appropriate counselors available to speak with you. If you experience any kind of sexual trauma that you'd like to report, Verity will be there to help you and help respond appropriately and encourage anybody that has any experience with sexual violence to, 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 to utilize Verity because that's what they're there for. That's the end of my comment, Neil.
Thank you, David. And I think I saw Irene writing down there to add it to the chat. And so we'll have that information available for folks. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. Appreciate it. And we'll go ahead and close this item. Before I move on, I just want to take a quick moment, as I had not done so yet, and introduce quickly Trevor Tanaguchi, who is covering for our city attorney, Jose Sanchez today. So Trevor, welcome to our meeting. Thank you for being able to join us. All right, we'll go ahead and move. Absolutely, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and move into the consent calendar. All items under consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. So at this time, I will entertain any requests to have an item removed from my council. Seeing none in the public, if you'd like to see an item considered separately, please raise your hand. Oh, yep, Todd, please. Sorry about that.
Mr. Mayor, yes. I'm going to apologize, Mr. Mayor. My internet is horrible tonight. And so I'm going to turn my camera off when I'm trying to talk. Chat, just chat. Can you hear me right now?
I can, yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you. I want to pull number seven and number nine, please.
Number seven and number nine. All right. So noted. Any other items at this time? Anyone in the public here? Okay, so what we have before us is an opportunity to make a motion to approve the consent calendar, save items seven and items number nine, which will be considered separately.
So Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make that motion that we approve the consent calendar as submitted with the exceptions of item number seven and number nine to be discussed separately.
And I'll second his motion.
Thank you. Irene, please.
Councilmember Lamb.
Aye.
Councilmember Walter.
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
And Mayor Turner.
Aye. Okay, so returning to item number seven, which has been pulled to consider, to be considered separately. David or, or any member of city staff, can you offer a little context on this one? And then Todd, is there anything specific you were hoping to, to learn on these?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I could probably, they'll probably be cleared really easy by Mr. Rincon. I, I just had a couple of questions I just need clarifying.
Sure, please.
Because there was only one company listed and I didn't see that this was like put out to bid, was this the only company that bid? Or was there more and this is the one we accepted?
Yes, hi. Good evening. This, this council member, this item is a professional services. And so we don't, we don't bid professional services in the state of California. We do it based on qualifications. And West Coast has done this for numerous other agencies with, with, you know, same, same needs. So we chose West Coast based on their qualifications.
Okay. Can I add to City Engineer Rincon's report? The, the professional services agreement is to help with development of a proposal that would, and the bid specs that would ultimately go out to bid for a company to provide cost estimates for the, the work in our wastewater ponds. So it will lead to work that will be put out to bid, but West Coast will help with the technical bids and, and specs for the cleaning of our wastewater ponds.
And have we compared their rates to others? Because I'm not, I'm not familiar with this, obviously, because I've never dealt with these companies being new on the, on the council. So their rates being, you know, $250 an hour average on a lot of this and needing, you know, a full week of phone calls and meetings seems a little odd to me. And so I'm just curious.
Yes, I'd like to answer that. It is comparable to other professional services that will receive engineering services. The rates are not out of the range of normalcy. And in terms of the number of hours, our, our last experience with this kind of project was a little bit more challenging for us. We ended up basically negotiating in court for, for the contractor. So this time we're being a little bit more cautious and adding more time to make sure the reviews are done. basically negotiating in court uh, for for the contractor. So this time, we're being a little bit more cautious and adding more time to make sure the reviews are done.
Thank you, Mr. Rincon. I really appreciate that. That answers all my questions on this one.
All right, thank you.
Excellent. Let me see if anybody from the public had any questions or comments on this. Not seeing any hands go up. With that being said, there is a uh, opportunity for a motion on the floor for item number seven.
Move the item, Mr. Mayor. I'll I'll second it or first it, I don't care.
We're gonna have a, so Todd Lanz made the motion, and uh, councilmember Bagby seconded. Irene, please.
Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Councilmember Walter.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb.
Aye.
And Mayor Turner.
Aye. Thank you. That takes us to item number nine, uh, resolution approving agreement with Deep Valley Security for the purchase and installation of security camera and video intercom uh, with access control at the entrance of City Hall. Todd, any specific questions on this one, or would you like an overview at this point? Uh, happy to, happy to help.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be simple as well. I just need clarification. Is this for COVID only, or is this uh, because it's something that the City Hall really needs for the future as well?
Mayor, council, I'm having a question. It's a, it's a great question. The uh, the proposal from Deep Valley Security is uh, both, really both. It it relates to to COVID, but it it also um, uh, because of cash handling in City Hall, I think provides an important security function. Uh, so it it will serve, it will serve, it will serve both purposes.
Great, thank you, sir. I just wanted to make sure it was going to be something that we will utilize in the future beyond COVID. Thank you, and with that, I'll make a motion for it.
Thanks, Todd. We have a motion on the floor.
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Second from councilmember Walter. Irene, please.
Councilmember Lamb.
Aye.
Councilmember Walter.
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
And Mayor Turner.
Aye. Thank you, Irene. That will take us out of the consent calendar and into communications of which we have received. None anything came after the publish uh, after this agenda was published, David or Irene?
No additional communications were received.
Thank you. Take us into public hearing items of which we have none, and I will uh, move us right into new business. Um, first item before us is presentation by Hildebrand Consulting LLC on the water and sewer rate study update in direction uh, or whether or not to proceed with the Prop 218 notice. Um, this is a continuation of our of our, you know, multiple discussions on water rates and sewer rates. And at this point, David, I will turn it over to you to offer introductions and uh, offer the presentation as you will.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of council. Uh, the the item tonight is is a follow-up from the presentation that was provided in uh, in in March, uh, specifically at your council meeting on March 24th, and then follows the uh, community forum workshop that was held last week on on April 7th. Since your original presentation in in um, on March, uh, there was some additional work that would that uh, culminated in a recommendation for um, one of three rate. That was uh, presented to council uh, on March 24th. And our consultant Mark Hildebrand is going to walk you through a a PowerPoint presentation and provide a a more detailed uh, update on that uh, that scenario and what actions were taken to revise the rates. Um, before we begin the PowerPoint, just want to talk a little bit about, you know, how the the kind of background and how we how we got here tonight. Um, it, you know, ending in a public hearing in November of 2020, there was some concern relative to the rate study uh, that um, the community indicated needed further review, and uh, subsequent to that, that hearing, the council did discontinue that the rate setting process and directed staff uh, kind of back to the drawing table and to conduct some additional outreach. Of course, that did 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 initiate with the uh, public review of proposed alternative rate scenarios at at your meeting on March 24th, and then the presentation that was held uh, last week um, with the community where whereby the the community was provided, you know, a a fairly in-depth overview of the rate scenarios, as well as um, a a fairly robust discussion by our uh, city engineer and our senior water operator about the proposed capital improvements, which is really the biggest driver of the proposed rate increases. I think what you're going to see in the presentation tonight is a reflection of staff's work to address the the community concerns that were expressed about, you know, what were, and and staff was acknowledged, were were significant rate increases. And and of course, that was related to the fact that there's been fairly significant deferred maintenance in both our water and wastewater utility systems. But with that said, we we understand that uh, it 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 it's often difficult now to progress with a a very robust maintenance schedule that requires, you know, relatively significant cost increases. But what we didn't want to do is completely eliminate the the proposed projects that were driving the rate increases, because we feel that there's significant risk in doing so. And it and we really highlighted that, I think, in the public workshop on uh, April 7th last week, where we discussed with the community, you know, why some of the capital improvement projects are are so vital to our ability to provide clean, potable, and safe water, and reduce the risk of uh, it, you know, a potential uh, hiccup in in being able to provide and deliver water services and wastewater services to our community. Um, in preparation for tonight, in the public workshop, we we prepared a flyer uh, as well as a PowerPoint presentation that was, you know, shared on our website, was shared via the newsletter, um, and was also uh, you know, you know, provided to uh, members of our community on on at request. Um, our goal was to, you know, seek as much of that public input as we can to to really help address the 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 questions uh, that came forward both previously in the previous rate update, but more importantly, in this latest amendment. Um, so, you know, we 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 did undertake quite an effort to try to ensure the long-term health of our of our utilities, but also reduce the burden of the rate impacts to our customers and our residents. And what we're trying to seek is 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 really uh, a a middle ground between continuing to defer improvements uh, and 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 potentially subjecting our our water and wastewater systems to uh, potential, you know, long-term costs that could really be greater to our community if we if we don't engage in these important maintenance activities. Um, we're going to talk more about that in the presentation, uh, and our our city engineer can certainly highlight, again, the importance of the projects that are uh, proposed to be funded with this rate study, and again, is is the uh, you know, what, really the driver of the uh, major cost increases that are associated with this rate increase. So with that said, I'd like to turn it over to to Mark Hildebrand. We've worked, our staff and team has worked closely with Mark uh, on the the uh, presentation uh, and the update of our rate study to address the community concerns, and it's going to culminate in a in a recommended rate scenario for council's consideration.
Great.
So Irene, go ahead and turn it over to uh, uh, post up the PowerPoint and turn it over to to Mark Hildebrand.
Great. Uh, would you, okay, Irene, I'll run it. Thank you. Well, um, good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for having me again. Um, I'll be going through a presentation that you've seen uh, previously. Uh, we have streamlined it a little bit to re- remove some of the uh, slides that we feel are no longer applicable, um, some scenarios that were previously presented, which we've eliminated uh, because we've gotten better direction, both from city council, um, as well as from the public uh, over the course of this project. Next slide. So, uh, I'd like to cover these bullet points. Um, you'll start with a little bit with the the project background, where we where we're coming from, uh, then I'll uh, cover the rate setting process and some legal requirements that were required to stay within. Um, then I'll address the water financial plan, which includes a wire shortage, uh, surcharge, uh, policy, and then move to the wastewater financial plan and wrap up with the proposed rates for water and wastewater. Next slide. So, um, just to remind uh, council and inform any public who has not attended previous meetings. Um, we, the city of Cloverdale did undertake a rate study last year in 2020, uh, which culminated with uh, a proposed public hearing in November to adopt new rates. Uh, leading up to that meeting in November, uh, we sent out a 218 um, notice, a notification of the public hearing, and there was a strong public response um, that eventually led staff to withdraw the proposed rates, uh, and we decided to defer the proposed plan in favor of um, doing additional community outreach, engaging more with city council and with the public to better understand uh, what paths forward were feasible and um, and could meet both the needs of the city's infrastructure as well as the public interest. Um, so the following recommendations are a product of that collaborative work that we've done with city council and with the public to uh, address the community's concerns. Next slide. Um, I I do need to point out that the financial plans that we've come forward with have cut deeper into the capital spending. Uh, we had in the straight study in 2020, you know, the project started with a a list of capital projects. Uh, over the course of that study, we tried to prioritize and really find projects that were of high priority, um, and deferred as much as possible. But that was still um, too much capital spending um, in terms of how it translated into rates, and so the what we'll be presenting tonight further cuts into the capital spending and defers capital spending even more. Despite those reductions, there's still, there still needs to be rate increases in order to fund the minimum investment into capital infrastructure. Next slide. So that's the the project background. In terms of rate studies and how they are conducted, uh, this is the general process. Uh, there's three steps. First, we look at the revenue requirements, which can also be expressed as a financial plan. We're really just looking at the money coming in and the money going out. The money coming in is predominantly rate revenue, and the money going out will be operating costs and capital spending, including debt service. And we look at the overall um, forecast, financial picture to understand whether there's an opportunity to issue more debt to minimize rates, and what sort of rate increases would be necessary in order to support uh, the the operations and the capital plan. Once we understand how much rate revenue we need, we uh, shift to the cost of service, which is ensuring that the rates that we develop are a reflection of the cost to provide service, so we look at meter sizes and water usage and sewer strength, and different dynamics that customers have in order to make sure that the bill that they receive is a proper reflection of the cost to provide them with service. And the final step is rate design, where we package that into a uh, rate structure um, that is a combination of fixed charges and usage rates, and I will be presenting all of this this evening. Next slide. In terms of legal requirements, uh, the cities require to comply with what's called Proposition 218, uh, which is part of the California Constitution, and it essentially says that your utilities can't charge more than the cost of providing service, um, and that the rates need to be proportionate to the cost of service attributable attributable to the parcels. Uh, in plain English, uh, this means that your utilities cannot charge rates, and then turn around and use that revenue to pay for costs in other departments. You can't change light bulbs in City Hall with rate revenue from your wire utility. Um, so it's very important to understand that the rates that are being proposed are 100% being used to fund uh, utility uh, activities and uh, invest into the utility infrastructure. There's also a procedural requirement that require 45-day notice, so at the conclusion of tonight's uh, presentation, if directed by city council, staff will be sending out a new prop, uh, public hearing notice um, in order to hold a public hearing in in a couple of months. Uh, next slide. The rate setting objectives that we held to for this project, uh, first and foremost, the the rates have to be legally defensible. That's the first stop. If if they're not legally defensible, then then you have to start from scratch. So, uh, first and foremost, we ensure that the rates that are being proposed are legal. Um, and then next, we want to make sure that the rates are sufficient to uh, generate the revenues that you need to meet all of your financial obligations. And we also try to keep your rates simple, uh, both so that your customers understand them, and so that your staff can administrate them simply. Next slide. So here is a timeline of the projects and the various meetings uh, that we've had. Uh, so uh, the first four meetings there that you see were all city council meetings uh, for the 2020 effort, uh, which culminated with the council public hearing in November. Uh, then we came back in March, and we presented revised uh, rates. Um, and as uh, Mr. Kelly pointed out, a week ago, we held a public forum to discuss the revised capital spending scenarios. We gave a presentation that uh, was similar to the one I'm giving this evening, and uh, then at the conclusion of that presentation, uh, we did um, solicit questions and comments and discussion uh, from the public. Um, the presentation uh, did take about, um, you know, 20, I believe, 20, 25 minutes, uh, which wasn't our, you know, in a public forum, we we were hoping to immediately be able to engage the public and get feedback, but it's really important to make sure that they're all informed on what was being proposed before we opened it up for conversation. So we did spend the first bit of the meeting, given that presentation, uh, but there was ample time at the end for folks to give comments and questions, and we ended up having extra time at the end, and we ended up adjourning early. Um, so this evening, you can see we're here proposing our final recommendation to issue a another Prop 218 notice, and we hope to come back here in June to hold a uh, a public hearing to adopt those rates. Next slide. Um, before I jump into the financial plans, I just want to remind uh, the public and city council where the city of Cloverdale relies right now in the region in terms of rates. You can see that uh, within these regional utilities, which are all, not all, but some of these are very similar to Cloverdale in terms of um, size of utility and and location. Uh, you can see that Cloverdale currently charges the the lowest rates in the region, so uh, oftentimes, that is a reflection of a utilities capital program. Uh, capital, operating costs, uh, barring extenuating circumstances are generally very similar. What's different between utilities is how much they reinvest in their infrastructure, and so what we're proposing here tonight is that Cloverdale uh, join um, the other utilities in the region and making sure that their infrastructure is being maintained properly. Next slide. Um, so this is, again, the first bullet just reiterates that you have the lowest rates in the region. Um, rate increases over the last three years have been minimal, about 3%, which is has been about the rate of inflation, so you're really just keeping up with the cost of living. Um, no rate increases were enacted in 2020, so you skipped a year, and unfortunately, skipping 2020 has only made the financial pressures on the utilities even more acute. Um, so some of the rates that we're proposing here, um, to a small extent, are being uh, driven by the fact that there's, there hasn't been any rate increases in over a year. Next slide. So I'm gonna go ahead and jump into the water financial plan, next slide. And here's just a graphical illustration of the Cloverdale utilities. It's similar for water and wastewater. So on the left, you can see the sources of revenue. It's predominantly uh, rate revenue, but there's some other miscellaneous operating revenue. You get interest earnings on your reserves. There's impact fees that come from your developers, and occasionally you issue debt or you receive grants. Those go into two different funds, your operating fund and your capital fund, uh, the the top one being for operating costs, the bottom being for your capital. The, the top one being for operating costs, the bottom being for your capital. And then the expenses come in the form of operating O and M, operating maintenance costs, paying for your debt service and cash funded capital projects. Next slide. So the water enterprise started the year last fiscal year, so not this fiscal year, but last fiscal year with about $2.6 million in cash, which will help set the stage for a graph I'm showing later. Next slide. And the revenues in the water enterprise are 90% rate revenue. So the, the rates that customers pay on their monthly bill are about 90% of the revenue. The remaining revenue comes from miscellaneous sources that you can, as you can see on the left. And that includes about a hundred thousand dollars in impact fees, which can be very volatile. The, the impact fees can increase or decrease dramatically depending on whether development is active or not. Next slide. This is the other side of the equation. So this is your operating expense and your debt service. It's important to note that what's not shown here is the capital spending. So this is about 3.3 million, which is a little bit less than your revenues. However, this does not include any capital spending. So we'll show on the, in the next coming slides that capital spending is, is pretty significant in addition to this. But you can see that about the majority of the, or number, the majority with the largest chunk is for salaries and benefits. And you also have about 15% that goes to debt service. Next slide. So I'd like to turn it over to city engineer Mark Bincon to talk a little bit about some of the water capital projects that he's discussed in the past, that he can summarize some, some of the critical needs are for the water utility.
Thank you, Mark. So what you see before you are some of our facilities, select few that show their age. We have the Cherry Creek reservoir, which has been in service since the, believe the eighties. And this, this tank is, is obsolete in a, in a couple of few factors. One of them is it doesn't meet current standards. In terms of seismic stability, you'll notice that it doesn't have sufficient tie downs, nor is there sufficient space at the top of the reservoir for sloshing when we do have a seismic event. Likewise, the interior is in desperate need of, of coating, but we can't take this critical facility out of service because there's no redundancy. So it's, we're up against a double barrel, the, the aging of the facility, it needs maintenance and also needs to be we basically replace at, at a near term. The second reservoir, Ritter reservoir, although it's, it's a newer tank, it is a, you see, it's a bolt together steel plated tank. Those have a lot less life. So even though it's a few years younger, and I misspoke on, on Cherry Creek. It was 1967 when it was put in the service. This one is put in 1988. So again, this one is, is starting to show leaks throughout its seams. You can see that it has tie down straps, but probably not sufficient for today's standards because of the age of the tank. And, and likewise, it too needs, needs help on the interior in terms of coating. So the Ritter tank, of course, is, is scheduled for, for replacement sooner than later as well, simply because the, the facility is just no longer viable. You get to a point where repairing, taking out of service and repairing those seams would only give you a few more years of life. The critical facility there at the bottom left is the chlorine contact tank. That's the first tank that you encounter outside of treatment. It's, it's the mandated chlorine contact time that you need to, to make mix with the water before you're setting into distribution. And this is a eight, one facility. It's been in service for 20 years. It's never been taken out of service because it is a, a basically a choke point in the system. There are no redundant systems there. So we lose that tank, we lose portable water. And that's serious. So what we're looking to do is make that tank a redundant tank and put in another one in service so that we have not only the redundancy, but we can alternate them and take them in and out of service just for general repairs and maintenance. And then of course, the, the transfer pumps, those are the ones, those are the key ones that send the water into distribution. And that facility is, is aging as well. The issue there, those mechanical systems don't last as long. The pumps become less efficient over time. The, the bowls become less efficient. So we're looking at a mechanical system as, you know, overdue for a total rehabilitation. But again, these are the transfer pumps. We don't have a lot of redundancy there. We have a few pumps that we can jockey, but nothing can be placed out of service long term. As for mechanical systems, anything over 20 years, you should really be looking at, at actual replacement. So that kind of summarizes the, the capital spending, some items in the water system.
Great, thank you. Next slide. In terms of reserves, the financial plan does make recommendations on the level of reserves to keep in your enterprise, your utility enterprises. We are targeting about $650,000 in your contingency reserve, which is about 25% of your operating budget and debt service. And that's in the event of any unforeseen changes in costs or drop in revenue. The replacement reserve is target is about $2 million. And this is to protect the city from both catastrophic failure, unexpected catastrophic failure. You want to have some cash in the bank in order to address that and be able to replace things quickly. And it also helps with the inherent volatility that you have from capital spending where capital spending can be a million in one year and four million the next. And, and so if you have some extra cash in your reserves, it allows you to absorb the spikes and build it back up during years where you're spending below average. And then finally, the capital fee reserve is a, just a utilitarian reserve. That's where you keep your impact fees that are paid by developers. Next slide. So here is the, the only capital spending scenario that we're going to present to you. This is a revision of the capital spending that was shown back in November. This is what we referred to as scenario three during the last meeting that we had with city council. And it's also presented as such during the public forum last week. It's the least amount of capital spending that the city engineering group was able to develop without having serious concerns about differing projects too much. And so you can see some of the graphics that are showing how some of the spending was deferred. You can see with the arrows in the yellow. And you can also see how some of the spending in the year seven and beyond is reduced. So the annual capital spending in year seven and beyond is also has, has dropped. So we both deferred and decreased the capital spending as, as much as city engineering group felt comfortable doing. Next slide.
Mark, before we move on, I just want to touch on a couple of things with council on this slide. I'd like to just point out that item number two, the new well, which is a significant capital cost is as you'll see under priority level reflects development. That particular item is if we were to eliminate it from our capital improvement program, it would not affect rates because that project is proposed to be 100% funded by development impact fees. So that, that particular project, while it, it's on our schedule and list of capital improvement projects, it's, it's not proposed to be funded by rates. It's proposed to be funded by, by impact fees. And you, you'll see that, I think, again later in the slide. Also wanted to just, you know, note as the city engineer covered those four, four projects. Project number seven is the Cherry Creek Reservoir Rehabilitation Project. That you can see we, because of the, the type, the, the, the date and age of the existing tank, we, we didn't think it was well, let's say this, we, we thought it was critical that we continue to make progress on, on that project. And therefore we did not defer it. Because we think that's a, a very high priority project. And we, you know, already began at least some just preliminary evaluation of the reservoir site on, to facilitate, you know, a future rehabilitation of project. In addition, number 10 is the Ritter Reservoir Project. You can see we deferred that by, by one year. And I think from the original rate scenario, we, we even kind of divided that up over two fiscal years. So that was, that was a, a, a change in that particular project. A, a number of the projects that were not highlighted in terms of a more detailed overview include, you know, a, a new reservoir sighting study, which is item number 11. And the recoding of the Del Webb, Del Webb reservoir, which is item number 12. Those, those were deferred. Item number 15, the, the meter radio read upgrade, that, that is a project that is intended to improve efficiency by installing electronic read system registers on our meters and is currently in progress. And this, this, this funding scenario shows our, you know, a, a phased approach to continuing to implement that throughout the utility system service area. And again, is intended to not only improve efficiency, but is e- expected to, to provide the ability for customers to better monitor and manage their water because they'll have access to their, their electronic reads in real time, once the project's implemented. Moving on is item 16 is the chlorine contact tank. Again, that's the project that city engineer spoke to. That was, that was deferred again, moved, moved out a year. So you can, you can kind of see how the impact on these important projects were, were, were changed and, and how it affects rates. Last but not least, just mentioning is item number 23, those, those, the water treatment plant transfer pumps. You know, those were moved out, moved out two years. So you, you can see that, you know, we, we looked at these projects very carefully. And while we initially thought it would be important to carry them out sooner, recognizing the impacts on rates, you know, th- these are some of the deferments that we're referring to, to be able to come back and, and with rates that are lower than what were originally proposed. So I just want to kind of point that out so that it, the, the community and the council kind of see, you know, what the impact those deferrals are on, on the rate increases and, and what the real impacts are in terms of being able to carry out those capital improvement projects in time. So Mark, I'll turn it back over to you.
Great, thank you. Thank you for filling in those details. They are, they are important. It's important to understand that these aren't just numbers that are being requested. These are real projects and they've all been considered individually and prioritized as such. So I, I appreciate that detail. And also for pointing out that we are using that development impact fee revenue. We're, we're, we're using it as extensive, extensively as we can. There's, there, we are fully exhausting that fund over the course of the next five years. Next slide. So here's a graphical representation of what that capital spending looks like. Again, what should really catch the eye is the fact that there's been nearly no capital spending since 2017 to 2022, which is just not, not a good look for a utility. You really want to be investing in, in your infrastructure because when you're not spending money on your infrastructure, you're neglecting it. And so I applaud the city engineer and, and city manager for taking this on despite the that it is difficult to, to ask for rate increases during these times. Next slide. So here is a comprehensive picture of what the capital spending, or sorry, what the financial forecast looks like over the next 10 years. So as a reminder, what you're looking at in the top portion in green, the green background represents revenue. So the darker green at the bottom represents miscellaneous revenue. The, the blip in 2020 represents some impact fee revenue that's coming in, in 2022. The lighter green in the middle represents your existing rate revenue. And the dark green at the top represents your, the additional rate revenue that you'll receive as a result of the rate increases that are being proposed. The percent rate increases that are being proposed are shown down below. So we are now proposing a 6% rate increase on July 1st. Sorry. Yes, sorry, July 1st of 2021. It says fiscal 2022, but that's because when you refer to fiscal years, we refer to the ending year. So that 6% would be this summer, July 1st. And recall that that, that increase during the previous iteration was 14%. And then the rate increases thereafter would be 12% per year for the next four years. The rate increases after 2026, those 7% and 3% are not being proposed at this time. They're simply a forecast of what you'll probably be facing when that time comes, if everything holds up. So it isn't, I think it's very important to look at the numbers on the bottom. So the cumulative five year rate increase that was proposed back in November was 84%. And staff was able to reduce the capital spending to the point where we've now gotten it down to 67%. So a, a material decrease in the proposed rates. And really not easy to come by, but I applaud staff for the work that they did to get it there. The graph in the middle represents your reserves. So the black line represents the target reserve level and the red is the forecasted. So you can see that you start at around $3 million and you jump around a bit above your reserve targets, but it's drawn down significantly in 2026 because of a spike in capital spending that needs to occur in that year. And then thereafter, you stay pretty close to the reserve targets. Next slide. That was water. Now I'm going to cover wastewater, next slide. So I won't go over this graph, very similar to the water utility with the revenues, the funds and the expenses. Next slide. This reserve, this enterprise starts with nearly $4 million in reserves back on July 1st, 2019. Next slide. The revenue picture is very similar, but 86% of the rate revenue or the revenue comes in the form of rate revenue with some miscellaneous revenues similar to the water utility. Next slide. Expenses also very similar, although this enterprise doesn't have any debt. So there's no debt service in here. But generally it's, it's about $2.4 million in expenses, which if you recall from the previous slide is actually a little bit more, I believe, than your revenues. So at, at this time, you can barely support your enterprise without any capital spending at all. And so that's why you'll notice that the wastewater rate increases that were proposed previously were more. And we, we've managed to get those down as well. But there's the financial picture and the wastewater utility is a bit tighter than it was in the white, in the water side. Next slide. Same idea with the reserves is a contingency reserve of about $585,000, which represents a quarter of your operating budget. A replacement reserve for your capital of about almost a million dollars. The capital spending in the sewer size is lower. And so you can afford a, a lower replacement reserve. And then the capital fee reserve, which is for the developer impact fees. Next slide. One dynamic that's important to note that is not part of what's being contemplated this evening is a major project that has been forecasted. And when Mr. Rincon speaks in a few minutes, he can talk, he can speak more to it. But there is a, a major project that's probably going to need to occur with your wastewater treatment plant. It's being driven by regulators. And it's not certain when the project will be required or how much it's going to cost. And so it's not currently included as part of the financial plan. But it is important for the community to be aware of its existence. And the fact that at some point the regulators may drop the hammer and force the city to upgrade their treatment plants, at which time you will be facing a significant expense. Next slide. So here is a series of bullets that I'll let your city engineer, Mark Bincon, speak to regarding some highlights for the wastewater capital program.
Okay, thank you, Mark. So some of, some of the highlights I have here before you, and it's, we don't have any photographs, unfortunately, because it's hard to take pictures of. Most of our wastewater utility is not seen and not seen is, is not necessarily in our, to our benefit. But nonetheless, some of the activities that we've undertaken recently, and this is of course, this is, these are the minor capital, but video smoke testing. video smoke testing is very important for the health and maintenance of our collection system. The older parts of the town have older pipelines and they have to be cleaned pretty frequently and we need to keep an eye on it. So we usually have in video, once a year, section, segments of it. And smoke tested, smoke testing identifies leaks in the system so that we can address those. Likewise, sewer main replacement, we've been doing a lot of slip lining here. Again, these are just interim projects to keep the pipeline intact and flowing short of replacing the pipeline. So these are ongoing, just to extend the life of the pipeline. The SCADA system, again, the wastewater treatment plant does not have a SCADA system. It's, and SCADA standing for, you know, Supervisory Control Access and Data Acquisition. So you're basically, you know, this is a system to keep an eye on a plant 24/7. It helps with the operations of the plant. And especially as we move into an advanced treatment, SCADA is going to be absolutely necessary. So as we roll this project out, we will make sure that it's adaptable to a future plant. But again, you know, we just need to start this project as soon as we can. The Sheham Pump Station, we've done some interim repairs there. Sheham Pump Station is not a properly designed pump station. It's just a series of manholes that collect wastewater from a development and that gets pumped out. And unfortunately, that system is very robust. And during emergencies, when we lose power, we have to man that pretty much 24/7. And that's just not a good situation. We did eliminate, you know, submerged pumps. So we're trying to improve the safety for the facility. But again, this facility is beyond its useful life and needs to be replaced. And then again, CCTV or, you know, closed circuit TV, videoing of domains. Of course, I kind of spoke to that in the first bullet, but it allows us to keep keep an eye on our system and prioritize how we spend our capital dollars when they become available. And that's my, end of my comments for the capital spending for wastewater.
Great, thank you. Next slide. And here's a similar table that shows again, the original or modifications that were made to the capital spending that was proposed back in November with both deferrals, decreases, and in some cases elimination of some costs. The Xs represent some spending that was removed. And much like the water side, we are maximizing the use of developer impact fees. And I don't know, Mr. Kelly, did you have any additional comments you wanted to make on these projects?
Mark, I really don't. Again, we tried to look at these with a fine tooth comb and identify areas where we could we could reduce the cost or defer the projects to enable lower rates. And, you know, again, it does come with the risk in deferring projects. But, you know, based on our past experience, these were reasonable adjustments that we could make to help reduce the capital cost burden on the rate structures. But I think this is, you know, this is something we want to make sure the council's absolutely clear on and when the community is clear on is that there is additional deferred maintenance within the system that's being reflected in the rate adjustments. And that comes with, that does come with a risk. But we do have reserves and, you know, in the case of an emergency, those reserves would be called in to be utilized to address any emergency impacts. And they do happen. I've had direct experience where in the municipality where, you know, very unexpectedly, a sewer line fails and it can actually impact the road and, you know, the other public rights away. And it comes at a significant cost to repair it on an emergency basis. But what we're trying to do is again, be proactive in our maintenance schedules as best as we can within our financial means. And that's what you're seeing in this proposed capital spending scenario.
Great, thank you. Next slide. And here is a graphical representation of that same spending. And again, notice the lack of capital spending since 2016. And the increase really just represents a normal level of capital spending. And again, that lack of capital spending is the reason that you have the lowest rates in the region. Next slide. Here is the financial picture for the proposed rates. So I explained what the top looks like. The, actually, I never finished explaining that the background represents the revenues. And then if it's not obvious, the foreground, the columns, the blue columns represent the spending. So the dark blue represents the operating costs and the light blue represents the capital spending. And so you are looking to create a balance between the height of the columns and the green background, which you can see that we've achieved towards the end there. And so you can see in the red line in the middle chart, we start at about $3 million and we're slowly drawing down on reserves until you meet your target reserves down in 2027. And then you achieve more of a steady state thereafter. The rate increases that are being proposed with this scenario, we managed to get the rates for July 1st down to 3%, which is a great improvement over the 17% that was proposed back in November. And then the annual rate increases thereafter are down to 10%. So this is an even more dramatic decrease in the rates that were proposed back in November. And you can see that the cumulative rate increases back in November was going to be 119% and now it's down to 51%. So again, a great effort by staff. And I applaud the community for getting involved and and improving the process as a result. Next slide. So now that we've talked about the overall rate increases, I'm going to jump into the actual rates and what they'll look like. Next slide. So these are your proposed rates for water with the 6% increase that would happen on July 1st. So you can see the current rates, the proposed rates next to it and the change. The reason that the change is slightly different for different components is because this did come with a cost of service analysis, which tweaked your rates a little bit based on water usage and the change in meter size and the composition of your customers since the last cost of service study was done five years ago. The the reason that the rates are generally a little bit higher than 6% is really because there's been a reduction in water spending in the last five years. And so one unit of water doesn't, there it's a, it's a pretty complicated, it's complicated math, but essentially the the amount of water that you sell has reduced. And so you need to charge a little bit more for it, but just half a percent. Next slide. Here is, you know, in case those numbers don't really make a whole lot of sense because that was showing the the usage rate and the meter rate, which the usage rate is the volumetric portion, the part of your bill that changes. And the meter rates, the fixed portion of your bill. What we've done here is we've put together a table that shows what your rates will look like depending on what type of customer you are. So this is called a bill impact analysis. And we're showing single-family homes in the top part of the table there with different levels of usage. So low water usage, up to high water usage. We're assuming they all have a one-inch meter and that they use different levels of water that you can see in the third column there. The current bill, for example, for a low water user, single-family would be about $48.07 for using five units per month. And then the proposed in year one would be $51.22, which would be a 6.6% rate increase. In year two, it would be $57.37 and that'd be a 12% rate increase. So pretty much in line with the rates that are being, the rate numbers that were proposed previously. And you can see how rates are impacted pretty uniformly and pretty equally across different customers and different types of water users. Next slide. And this is simply a table that shows the actual rates for the next five years. So through July 1st, 2024. Next slide. Here's a survey that shows just water, just isolates your water bill for a single-family home with an average with typical wire usage of six units. You can see currently, you're not the lowest bill in the region for water. You are the lowest sewer bill in the region. And so that's why the combined bill is the lowest in the region. On the water side, you're towards the middle, the bottom of the middle, I would say, and sale treated water because the wholesaler that's selling you the water has economies of scale. So they're able to produce tremendous amounts of water and treat it all at once. And so they're able to produce vast amounts of treated water and then sell it at a pretty economical price. When you've got water treatment plants there locally, the treatment plants are significantly smaller and so you lose a lot of those economies of scale. And so it's no accident that you see that the top three utilities on this, in this survey all have their own treatment plant. And that the city of Cloverdale has one as well. Mr. Kelly, anything to add?
Well, I think, I think, Mark, it's fair to say that also with operating a treatment plant versus purchasing wholesale water is you have relatively higher fixed costs per gallon of water. And that fixed cost, you know, doesn't necessarily change with usage. And I think that's, you know, a significant difference between, you know, us and other cities that are able to, to be able to purchase, you know, treated potable water. We're really a soup to nuts company in terms of being able to procure, treat and deliver potable water, much like Willets in Ukraine.
Great question. I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. Next slide. So now we'll jump over to the wastewater rates. And again, this is going to be a 3% rate increase on July 1st. And you can see that the different rates and components of the rates change by, on average, if you look at the last column, on average, that comes about to 3%. You can see it affects different customers in different ways. And again, this is the result of the cost of service study. This is only a dynamic that occurs in year one because there are some adjustments that we made in the cost of service where we've allocated some costs to some customers and just reallocated those costs based on the dynamics of utility. And so you will see a slight difference there between the different customers. But starting in year two, all customers will see the exact same 10% rate increase across the board. Next slide. And here is the survey for the wastewater. Again, as I mentioned, you're far and away the lowest sewer bill in the region, which is why the combined bill puts you at the bottom in that first survey that we showed. And with the 3% rate increase, you won't be, you won't move up in ranking. And then with the 10% rate increase that you'll have in year two, you still won't move up in ranking. And it's important to remember that all of these utilities will be raising their rates over the coming years as well. I know firsthand because I worked for a lot of them. So, you know, it's, it's, it's important to understand that all these, all these rates will be increasing over time. And so I wouldn't expect Cloverdale to leap over very many of these utilities over the next five years. Next slide. Here's the five-year schedule for the sewer rates, the wastewater rates all the way through July 1st, 2024, 25 rather. And I believe that might be the last slide. So again, this is the reminder of the same, the slide that we showed at the beginning, that even with the proposed rates in year one, you'll still be the lowest water rates in the region. Maybe in year two, in year three, you'll go to second to lowest, to third to lowest, but I don't expect you to, to go to the top of the pack anytime over the next forecasted period of time.
Mark, may I add in real quick here? I think another important point is, can you use, so us being the lowest here in wastewater, one might think, okay, raise wastewater rates and don't raise water rates as much and kind of look at it as a, as a kind of a wash, so to speak. And does it work that way?
Great question. No, if you recall back on the legal slide, the Proposition 218, I mentioned that you can't use water rates to pay for light bulbs in City Hall. Well, you also can't pay for light bulbs at the wastewater treatment. You can't, you can't move money between utilities. Those are independently operated and so you, essentially that comes down to a water customer paying for another wastewater customer's bill. And that's not legally viable. But I appreciate the question for clarification. Thank you for that. Next slide. So this is my last slide. As I mentioned in the previous slide showing the schedule that we're here this evening with this final recommendation to city council. I think that staff has done a tremendous job and really taken a hard look at the capital spending to see the maximum amount of capital deferral. I really think they've gone as far as they can. There's really nothing left to defer or to eliminate. So staff will be asking council for direction to send out 218 notices after this meeting. We hope to have them sent out by next week. And then that would notify the public of a public hearing to be held on June 9th. I'll turn it back over to Mr. Kelly before handing it back to the council.
Thank you, Mark, for your overview and comprehensive presentation. I think it was very valuable and certainly at this time, if council wants to revisit or have any questions about the specific slides, we're happy to redress those with, with the mayor and members of council. As Mark indicated, we're, you know, we're seeking your direction, whether you support the scenario that was presented tonight. Again, that was, you know, previously scenario number three. I think we heard from the public forum that at least there was a comment that in support of that scenario, we think it addresses the concerns that we heard, you know, during the 2020 study. You know, I think the two primary and major concerns that we've heard were the significance of the proposed rate adjustments. And I think what you see tonight is a reflection of staff work to try and address that concern and come back with a scenario that reduces the rate increases to, you know, a relatively bare minimum that addresses the capital improvement needs of our water and wastewater utilities. In addition, I think the secondary concern that was addressed or brought forward during the 2020 update was concerned about, you know, new development. And, you know, staff really did look at that very carefully and closely. And as Mark shared with council during his presentation, we maxed out the use of impact fees, available impact fees to fund projects that had, you know, relationship to serving new development and growth. And so that also reduced the, I think, the cost burden on existing residents and enabled us to, to, you know, reduce some of the rate increases by maximizing the use of impact fees. Of course, that does mean that there will be, you know, very little impact fees from, in your water impact fee account, wastewater impact fee account for, for other future projects. But it does help pay for those projects that may induce growth. And again, some of those projects you could technically eliminate from, from the CIP. And it would have no impact on rates. I think the other concern was about the public engagement process. And again, this is our, now our, our third meeting, first of which was on March 24th, where we reviewed with council those proposed rate increases. Of course, that's a Brown Act meeting and we noticed in our newsletter to the community that rates were going to be considered or reviewed by council. And so there was an opportunity for, for our residents and communities to, to listen in to that presentation and provide feedback. Of course, during the public forum, I, I recognize that some folks maybe wish it could be in person and, and because of the, the current restrictions imposed by our county health department, we, you know, conducted that forum virtually. But we provided every opportunity to engage, you know, the, the community to engage us with questions and comments. And I think there were some very good questions that were provided. And I, I, I felt like we made, you know, significant effort in, in addressing those, you know, the questions that were provided and, and the comments in, in this, in this rate study. We didn't always discuss directly, but we, we, you know, took those comments seriously. And I think that's what's reflected in the recommended scenario that you see tonight. So our, our recommendation is that council provide direction to staff to, to move forward with the, the prop two eighteen process. Of course, one of the key feedback we received from council and the community during the last public hearing is that to ensure that we provide the, the notice in both English and Spanish. And we have since procured services to ensure that we provide a notice that's, that's bilingual. We're, we're also working on actually including in the notice. And what, what, what we, we hope to do it is to actually provide a form for submitting protests. That's, that's a work in progress. We're, we're, we're trying to figure out how best to do that to, to actually facilitate if, if folks want to protest, enable them to, to do so, right, you know, utilizing the, the prop two eighteen notice. And again, that's something that we're, we, we, we were working on today to see how we can best enable that. And we think that, you know, again, our goal is, is, is to, you know, be as completely transparent as we can with, with the analysis, I think, included in your agenda report, well, I don't think I know, is, is a very detailed study. Mark Hildebrand, I, I want to commend him for preparing that analysis. It, it's, it's got a tremendous amount of data and information. That report is available to, to the community, obviously in the agenda packet and will be posted on our website. I think during this forty-five day review period should council direct us to move forward. It, it provides a significant opportunity for the community to, to read that study. You know, the previous update was, was, was already provided on our website and available for any members of our community who, who wanted to, to read it or have questions to have us respond. So with that said, we're, we're again, just seeking council's direction. If you support the scenario, we'll, we'll move forward with issuing the prop two eighteen notice. That's again, a legal requirement that we provide forty-five days for landowners to, to, you know, actually see the rate increases in, in a form as, you know, as required by proposition two eighteen and hold the public hearing on, on June ninth, which would be in the nearest date after that forty-five day period is complete for council to, to consider, you know, actually formally adopting the, the proposed rate structure that we're, we're recommending to, to council tonight. So that really concludes staff's report. We're, we're here if you, again, if you want to revisit or any of the slides or have any questions or comments for us.
All right. I think what I'm of a mind to do is a quick bio break. And council, please, you know, kind of compose any questions you might have when we come back. I also welcome the public to, you know, think about what questions you might have. And we'll, we'll come back in about seven minutes. We'll call it seven forty-three. We'll reconvene the meeting. Thank you. Go ahead and reconvene. Looks like everyone's connectivity is up and running again. And so essentially we just received a presentation from Mark Hildebrand and city staff. I'd like to open it up to the council for any questions you may have on the report that we just received. Then we'll turn it over to public comment and bring it back to the dais. So it looks like council member Walter would like to go first, please.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The mayor asked the question earlier during the presentation. And I'm not quite sure what the, how to interpret the answer, but I have a similar question. You know, we were presented with three scenarios. And this evening we have scenario number three in front of us. But is it possible to kind of do this like where we would pick scenario number three for the water and then the wastewater would be scenario number two? Or does it have to be three and three? Or, or can we mix them up a little? And the reason I say that is because the, the wastewater doesn't look to be under scenario two that heavy a burden. And I know we keep the funds separate, but can we, can we, can we cherry pick how we want that? Or does it have to be one scenario across the board? Thank you.
Council member Walter, I'll, I'll, I'll start with the question and I'll ask Mark Hildebrand to fill, fill in any gaps in my response. But the question that you're asking is, can you choose an alternative rate scenario for wastewater than water? And the answer is affirmative, you can. If, if council so chooses, you could support the previous scenario two for wastewater and the proposed scenario three for, for water. And Mark, I think you, you do have slides available if, if council wants to take a look at scenario two for wastewater. Can you, can you confirm that?
Yeah, I could, I could dig those slides up. And if that's the request, just give me a moment to do that while you continue the dialogue. But to, to answer the direct question, yes, we can mix, mix and match. We can go with any of the scenarios. We, we did come forward with just the, the two in the interest of streamlining the conversation. I was under the impression that was the direction we're going, but we, we certainly can go with scenario two on the wastewater. And that would certainly provide the wastewater utility with more funds to be able to address the capital needs more, more quickly.
And, 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 you know, I'm sorry for springing this on you at the last minute, but, you know, we have some pretty big expenses coming down in the wastewater, especially with tertiary treatment down the road. And I can't imagine that we're going to be mandated to do that without some funding. But by the same token, I, I just think that, you know, for me, the, the wastewater is, is, is a bigger issue based on our proximity to the Russian River, based on what's happened down on McCrory Road. You know, I mean, we really have to make sure that those improvements get done. So that's just my thought.
Certainly. So I, I have that slide available. Did you want me to, to pull up what that, what those rate increases looked like?
Well, that's at the pleasure of the mayor.
Sure.
That, that's fine. That's fine.
Okay. Just a moment here. Okay. Can you see that one? So if you recall, we can, you can see the rate, the proposed rate increase is down at the bottom. Well, well, first let me start with this slide, which shows the changes, the scenario two. And it basically the same list of projects with less deferral and, and less reductions in spending. And then there's the graph here, which shows the same. And then finally, the financial forecast here shows that the rate increases would be seven percent in, on July first, followed by four thirteen percent increases thereafter. So it would be a cumulative seventy-four percent over the next five years as opposed to the hundred and nineteen percent back in November and compared to the fifty-one percent that is scenario three.
And just thank you.
Mark you.
The, the, the difference is for fiscal year twenty-two, in scenario two, the rate increase is seven percent. Under scenario three, it was three percent. For the, the four following years, under scenario two, where it's thirteen percent. Under scenario three, it's a ten percent increases. Comparison from a percentage perspective. So you got seven and 13s on scenario two, three and 10s under scenario three.
Yeah.
Melanie, you have a question there, please?
Yeah, I guess, you know, this is kind of a question for Mark or our staff. And, you know, I think that you've done a really good job of responding to, you know, the community's concern. And in the midst of, you know, I think one phrase that stood out to me was that the lack of capital spending is why we have the lowest rates in the region. And it's because we're not, you know, they're, the rates have been, you know, we're just kind of become accustomed to them because they've been artificially low. They're not really accounting for what the real costs of maintaining and planning for this infrastructure really cost. And so, you know, our rates don't actually represent the real cost of providing the services and maintaining the infrastructure and maintaining those values. So I think that you've done a really good job in presenting us with different options. And I guess, you know, what, one thing that has significantly changed since we started this process, you know, months and months and months ago. And I really do appreciate you showing all the public meetings and all of, you know, the time that has been spent on this and all the research that the staff has put into the CIP as well. But the one, the variable that we're, we have now is the infrastructure bill. Of course, that, you know, that's possible federal legislation. There's also a lot of, I mean, because there's like a flurry of bills, you know, in the California legislature because of the pent-up demand, because of not being able to work on anything last year. So now there are, you know, there are a couple of different bills where we could potentially, you know, find infrastructure dollars. So I guess my question for staff is, is that I'm feeling pretty comfortable with the option that's in front of us. And I know, you know, we still have yet to hear from the public, but how much do you think we're, not that we can depend on federal and state dollars for a lot of this stuff, but are we? It seems to me that with the plan that we have now, we're in fairly good position to do what we know we have to do and probably be able to take advantage of some federal and state funding that's going to, that might become available for some of these larger projects. I know that's kind of a nebulous question, but I think you probably know, you know, you probably can, you know, talk about what, from where you sit, do you think we'll be able to maybe take care of some of the items that we've had to push down the list of priorities?
Councilmember Mark, I'll respond. And then I know you have some vital.
Mark David knows how to handle those credit questions for me. Sorry. Yeah, probably best he does take the first swing.
Well, first, I want to acknowledge that that's a really important question. And members of our community asked that very similar question during the public forum, and I thought it was a great question. And I think, you know, there is a very good likelihood that an infrastructure bill will get approved. We don't know that at this point. It's subject to the political, federal political processes. And we certainly know there's just tremendous uncertainty in that process. And as such, we're not counting on that. We're counting on being able to build those, fund and build those projects in this rate study. With that said, when, and if a funding bill is provided for infrastructure, we will seek opportunities to obtain grants to support those projects. Some of the nuances related to grants management is we are more often than not required to fund the project from start to finish with our, with our own funds and then seek reimbursement, you know, upon project completion or near the end of the project. And the delay in receiving reimbursement can often be a fairly significant timeframe ranging from one to even three years. It requires quite an effort. As you can imagine, the bureaucracies don't move quickly in cutting checks. And as we've experienced with even very small grants of $100,000 from the federal government, it is required significant staff costs and resources to seek those reimbursement. And it comes again after we've expended those funds. So you do need to have the funds on hand to be able to carry out the project and then seek reimbursement later. Now, where that does come into play is if we are able to carry out these projects, or one of these projects, let's say, with federal funds. Remember that, and this is important for council, is that what we're asking council to do by dropping the rates is set, they would set the maximum potential rates that you could impose. Council can always, on an annual basis, reduce it from that maximum. So should we be able to procure a grant within the five-year timeframe of this, this rate study that provides adequate revenue for us to carry out a project where we don't need to rely on rate revenue? Then council can, we can look at that and say, well, you know what, this year, rather than a 10% increase in the water, in the water fund or a 10% rate increase in the wastewater fund, we're going to do an 8% because we know we can manage the fund with lower revenue. And of course, we'll have to look at that kind of on an annual, either on an annual basis or, you know, a three-year period to kind of do that check-in. And I think that's the best practice for council to engage in is to do a check-in and kind of see where we're at. And then to provide you that flexibility. Again, those are the maximum rates. And we've predicated those maximum rates on, you know, fully funding the infrastructure projects that we've identified in the capital spending program. But there's a lot of challenges. Again, we didn't want to count on revenue that we may, may or may not receive. So, Mark, anything you want to add to that, to those points that I shared with Councilmember Bagby and members of council?
That was the, that was the vast majority of what I was going to say. And I guess the only thing I would add is that receiving those types of grants is, has a remarkably temporary effect. It doesn't change the fact that you, this is still, what we're proposing is to raise your rates to the level that it can support what you're going to need to do year in, year out for the rest of time. This is the cost of maintaining a utility with water and sewer. And while it would be great to get some relief and it will give you some temporary relief, you still need to get your rates up to a level that you can support a adequate capital program.
Thank you. Any other questions from council at this time? Todd, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And please let me know by waving if my internet fails again. First, I'll thank you to everyone. You guys have done what I would call a negotiated scenario, and it's brilliant. I mean, you've taken into consideration what every single person has said since at least November in the public. You guys answered almost every question I had and left me with only one. So that's a good thing. On your wastewater, why is the multi-family cheaper than the single families overall?
Because they produce the same type of sewage, but less of it. Single, multi, by looking at analysis, we're charging by dwelling unit. And so we have data on how much water is used by those dwelling units. We look at winter time use of water as a proxy for what their indoor water usage is, since we don't have a meter for sewer. But it's pretty typical that, you know, you know, your single-family homes produce more sewage than multifamily dwelling units. And so they have a slightly smaller rate.
Even with the extremely higher rate of return, because they had a much higher rate of return than a single family. It just seemed weird, you know, with a multifamily, even though, even though it's a multifamily dwelling, and it probably has one pipe that meets the sewer line, they're still using the same amount of sewer.
Right.
For a person.
No, it's a, it's a, well, you're making a great point that for the water that, that multifamily does use, almost all goes back to the sewer because they hardly use any outdoors, which is a single family, obviously. But if you looked at water usage for a single family, it dwarfs multifamily. So that's why we look at winter time use, because theoretically, that really minimizes the outdoor wire use. And so it's more of an apples-to-apples comparison, and still, you still see a lot more. And it's, it's a pretty well-accepted industry standard to, that multifamily generally has, you know, two to three, on average, two to three people per dwelling unit. And a single family has maybe three or four. It depends on the region, depends whatnot. But your numbers are pretty consistent with what we see in the industry.
Okay, thank you. And there was just one clarification I had, and I think David Kelly's probably best for you. When you talked about maxing out the development, development impact fees with the projects coming in on this chart. Is there, I understand that, but isn't there room for the city to negotiate with the developers for more? Because it seems like there, when you're adding a, like, basically what we're setting up is 10 to 20% growth in Cloverdale over the next, say, four years. That's going to be 10 to 20% more demand on our systems that we're not taking into account in these numbers. And so it seems like we should be asking for more than just a well or the little bits that we're pushing with their impact. Because it seems like we should be trying to negotiate more for the taxing and the demand that is going to put on our systems. Could you just give me a little more clarification, please?
Absolutely. The development impact fees are, you know, established independently of water and water rates. But, you know, by the council. What's required in order for council to adopt new impact fees is for staff to bring forward an updated NEXIS study in accordance with what's referred to as AB 1600. And now that we, one of our key objectives in updating our capital improvement program was to be able to update our, our capital improvement fees. And that was a kind of a critical step we were able to complete, was to get that, get that CIP done. And ultimately, we want to get, make sure council, you know, supports those projects. And so then what we do is kind of a next step is look at those capital improvement projects and determine an allocation of costs between existing development and new development. And all those costs that are related to new development, we, through the NEXIS study, can update the impact fees to address, you know, the full cost of that infrastructure. And so that, you know, that is, there is an opportunity for us to, as a next step, you know, engage in the work of updating our NEXIS study. Because it's been, it's been a while since we've done a, you know, a comprehensive update. And council can, can choose if, if you like, you know, do you want to look at just targeted rate adjustments or impact fee adjustments? So, you know, do a rate study just on, say, water and sewer or a comprehensive NEXIS study. It looks at all the rates. And, you know, in some cases, they can, they can actually go down depending on, you know, what factors are in play. But that would be our next step, would be to perform a NEXIS study and then bring those proposed rates, you know, that would be analyzed in the NEXIS study back to council for your consideration. We, we did, we did do just a minor comparison. We didn't do a comprehensive comparison of our water and sewer fees. But that question did come up, and we determined that our, in fact, Mark, Hildebrandt Consulting is a firm, among others, that do those types of studies and kind of generally familiar with the water and sewer rates. And we determined our, I think, our water rates are fairly in line with, you know, average cities. And likewise, I think wastewater is a little bit, a little bit on the higher side on per average, you know, new residential unit. But that kind of sets forth, we could revisit that and bring forward a NEXIS study for council's consideration. But that'd be kind of a separate, a separate study from this. But it would enable us, should the rates go up, to put more, possibly more revenue into, you know, some projects that, if they have growth inducement.
Thank you, sir. I really appreciate that. I support this project 100%, this rate increase. And scenario three is actually by lower than I would have even looked for. So you guys really worked hard and negotiated it. And I want to make it sure that everyone knows how appreciative I am of everything you've done to get it to this point, to show the public that you're really working hard to work with them. So, thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Todd. I also want to applaud city staff and Mark Hildebrandt. They even went so far as to have one-on-one phone conversations when appropriate. And there was one in particular that I sat in as kind of an observer. I only introduced myself at the onset of the call and then just really listened in and heard what the questions were and heard how our experts, you know, kind of chose to answer them. And, you know, not to sound cliche, but it's hard not to say that no stone was left unturned. I mean, really, some questions that came out of, you know, points of view and universes that weren't even necessarily what we were addressing were still addressed as it was likened to this process. And so it's not really my, you know, it's not really the point in the agenda right now for me to get into this part. But I do want to agree with you that I witnessed something very similar, where every, every stone was looked at. Every possible option in order to make a digestible proposal was genuinely considered. So thank you for those comments and recognizing that as well. Any other comments or questions from city, sorry, city council, as I'm going to go ahead and open it up to the public? Okay, let me go ahead and look over here. As a matter of fact, with this one, Irene, can I turn it back to you? Do you mind monitoring the hand raising on this one? It just makes it a little easier for me to look around. And are there anybody from the public, should you like to discuss anything in the presentation, ask any questions? Now is the time. Please raise your hand. Star nine if you're on the phone. Thank you.
Okay, we will begin with Linda.
Linda, please.
Hi, yes, I just want to emphasize, as I did in the other meeting, that I think you should stick with scenario three. It meets the needs and it's not going to be quite as offensive to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. And the next person, when you're ready, Irene?
I don't see any other hands that are raised.
Okay, give it another three count and see if anything happens and close public comment.
And I just do want to acknowledge that written comments were received by both Rob Kozlowski and Craig Carney.
Oh, thank you, Irene.
I see Craig did raise his hand.
Excellent.
Hello. Well, thank you. Thank you for taking the comments. I just, I absolutely just have a single thought here. In the five months that, since the initial proposal, it seems like there's been two meetings. One, a council meeting where public was invited to comment. And then the other was a public forum where, you know, an hour and 45 minutes were spent with a presentation and 15 minutes to allow for comments. And it seems to me like that's a bit less than anticipated, at least from the comments from the November meeting, when we thought that, you know, there'd be some public input. And, you know, the fact is, is that, you know, there was very little opportunity for public input until just a week or two ago, and here we are now. Thank you.
Any other hands raised this time, Irene?
I see no other hands are raised at this time, Mayor.
Okay. Do you mind? Let me see. Now, I'll go ahead and close public comment now. I want to just add a couple of things before council deliberation, just to kind of honor the comments that were received. Similar to the testimony or comments received by Craig regarding his perception of public's input on this item. I also received similar comments from Mr. Rob Kozlowski, who council received a written correspondence from him. And him and I spoke this morning, and he voiced very similar concerns about what he described as an opaque process. So I just wanted to make sure the council was aware of that and just kind of also allow Craig to understand that that was also voiced. So anyhow, I'm going to go ahead and bring it back to the council for deliberation. What we have before us is the opportunity for action regarding giving council direction on which scenarios to move forward with the Prop two eighteen notice or to give direction otherwise. And before we kind of lay into it, I just kind of want to start out with Summer and just say, Summer, any thoughts you have on this? Any questions that you'd like to add? You you will be a rate payer soon enough, so.
Um, personally, it sounds, can you guys hear me?
I can hear you pretty good.
Okay, um, so honestly, after that slide, it looks like there's quite a bit of effort being put into this. And obviously, I'm not paying water sewer rates, but if I was part of the public, I would be very, um, I'd be very impressed that you guys are putting this much effort into making sure everybody's satisfied and everyone's opinions are included. So, you know, as a future water and sewer rate payer, I would be happy with what you guys have done.
Understood. Thank you, Summer. Appreciate your comments. So with that, council, I bring it back for deliberation. As I mentioned, we do have some options for action before us. Who'd like to go first?
Okay, not seeing.
I would, I would, I would suggest that we accept the presentation. I think we provided ample feedback to staff that, you know, I'm 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 supporting the recommended water and and wastewater rates, and I think we should proceed to the proposition two eighteen public noticing. So that's a, that's what I would recommend. I don't know if you, I don't know if you necessarily need a motion. We just need to have consensus around that.
One thing I wanted to add. Oh, thank you. Sorry about that. I mean, to cut you off there, Gus. This just crept into my head. It's it's a question or a thought. When we do the Prop two eighteen notice, right, we've already made commitments that we're going to do it bilingual and you've engaged the services to ensure that that that's followed through and that that makes me very happy. And while we were having that dialogue, it popped into my head, I I wonder what it would cost to take partnership with Citrus Fair while while those notices are going out, be it in the water bill or or wherever that happens to be, to utilize their sign there on the boulevard to say something along the lines of check your statement or check your water bill or we've sent you something worth reading or do you know what I mean? And and just kind of give it a call out. That that only just popped into my head, but it's not deviate from what we're trying to accomplish. I I too concur with my other three council members and 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 see an opportunity and and support moving forward with two eighteen notice with scenario number three for both items. All right, do you guys have everything you need as far as a direction goes on that one? City staff, anything further you need from us?
Mayor, council, I just want, I just to restate what I hear council. The direction was to move forward with with scenario three for both water and wastewater. Proceed with the Prop two eighteen notice that would reflect the proposed rate adjustments, the maximum rate adjustments that are provided for under under scenario three. You know, send the Prop two eighteen notice both in English and Spanish to our our landowners and water customers. And then set a public hearing date for June ninth to bring those back for for council's consideration and proposed adoption.
Seeing nobody say no. Mark, thanks again for just truly your commitment to Cloverdale in this process. We we really have asked a lot of you and I I just appreciate your thoroughness and and being available for questions, not only as a council, but when the community reached out to you as well. You were very thoughtful and and thorough when you provided answers. And I just genuinely appreciate the time and effort you've given to our city.
I appreciate the opportunity to be involved.
All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item. Thanks again, everybody. And that's going to take us to item number eleven. Still in theme of water, we're going to be talking about a resolution authorizing membership in the Sonoma Marin Water, uh, water, sorry, Sonoma Marin Saving Water Partnership, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a Sonoma Marin Saving Water Partnership Memorandum of Understanding to provide regional solutions for water use efficiency. I'm led to believe we have a couple of guests who will be joining us for this presentation. I see one has come on identifying as Sonoma, uh, Sonoma Water. And David, why don't you take us away?
Absolutely. We we previously, previously received, council previously received the presentation by staff at Sonoma Water, most specifically Paul Piazza provided an overview of the the benefits of joining the Sonoma Marin Water Saving Partnership. There were some questions about the the cost of participation in that program. And our our city engineer, Mark Rinkone, working with Sonoma Water staff, prepared an agenda report. And he's going to provide an overview of the the costs associated with with participating in that program. I just want to note that, you know, we're we're on the heels of of asking council to consider some water usage restrictions because of, you know, these significantly dry conditions. And, you know, the partnership is actively developing materials related to, you know, promotion, education around water-saving strategies that if if council should join, will will provide some opportunities to to utilize some of that material. But without further ado, I'd like to turn this over to our city engineer, Mark Rinkone, to speak more specifically to the agenda item.
Yeah, so the Water Savings Partnership is is of course much needed, especially this this coming year where we're looking at a severe drought. And so it's time to take advantage of a regional approach to managing our water resources. Looking at the cost, the cost breakdown was provided to you on a table. And it's a little complicated, but it's it's nonetheless reasonable. The the annual fee is set at twenty-two thousand dollars. We have a a local match that has kept it within our budget of one hundred seventy-five percent of the annual fee. And that works out to be thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. And then we'll be saving some some funds from the RRWA Stormwater Education Fund, which which focuses on stormwater, whereas the partnership focuses more on water, water use, water consumption, and water efficiencies. So that will be redirected towards the partnership. And then lastly, as part of the local program fund, we have three thousand dollars as an earmark for local program, the local program fund, which is helps California water efficiency efforts. Basically, the the I have here before us, you know, Sonoma Water that can answer any specific questions on this. But what we're looking for tonight is is basically authorization to let the city manager go ahead and negotiate a memorandum of understanding with Sonoma, excuse me, with the partnership to go ahead and 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 get that moving so that we could take advantage of their services as soon as possible. I think it's really important this this year to go ahead and move forward with that membership. If you have any questions regarding the the benefits or anything associated with that, by all means, please ask. We have, you know, two two members of Sonoma Water here to to answer some questions if you have them. And and again, this is a, this is the right move at the right time.
Thank you, Mark. I appreciate that. Council, any opening questions that we'd like to start with? Any comments, anything like that? Okay, I'll I'll ask just one. It's very general. I think it's just for for anyone who just may not typically understand the approach. All all the municipalities have have really much are already decided individually that water saving is incredibly important. What what makes aligning with your group for a regional approach different?
Well, there's certainly a cost benefit, particularly as it applies to smaller agencies. So when I got working in water use efficiency, initially it was with a small agency. And when you're, you know, struggling with wearing a lot of hats, it's great to have allies that are working on your behalf that you can lean on for information about developing local programs, bringing expertise that you may not be able to round out amongst your own staff without having to incur additional costs to hire someone. And then some of the benefits in particular are that Sonoma Water is the lead agency for the partnership, has a grants and funded project staff that's able to bring in regional grant funding. And this was one of the sticking points for me at a small agency. It was very difficult to be on top of the various tasks that you were charged with maintaining in your role as government staff and also have an eye and ear out to what's available for grant funding. And as you probably well know, when those grant funds do become available, usually you find out about them on a Wednesday and your application is due by Friday. And there's a lot involved with these grant applications. And once you're actually awarded a grant, the fund really gets started in terms of regular reporting requirements. And then even once the grant comes to conclusion, there may be follow-up reports two and three years beyond. So the benefit of having a larger entity to come in and help coordinate some of those efforts for smaller agencies is unmatched, I think, in that it allows you cost savings for your citizens to get programming that is valuable and needed at a much reduced cost. So that that's probably what I would say is one of the primary benefits.
So thank you. One more question, if I may. What would you consider some of your biggest successes or victories since your inception and where do you still feel you have gaps?
Well, it's interesting, you know, there's been a transition in water use efficiency in terms of the course it's come in the last twenty-five or thirty years in California. So you've probably heard of the California Urban Water Conservation Council, which had been around for many, many years, that had a voluntary MOU approach for water use efficiency where agencies could sign on to a memorandum of understanding. And then they had developed best management practices for urban water conservation that each of those agencies that are signatory to the MOU would commit to meeting in terms of time and in terms of water savings. That has come and gone largely. And back in twenty eighteen, after the last drought occurred, the state recognized that there was additional work that needed to be done statewide to be prepared for changing climate, prolonged droughts. And, you know, what we're looking at in terms of competing for, you know, a, not a shrinking resource, but as you well know, water, water is here and there, there's no more to be found, so it has to go further. So following the drought, the state passed legislation. The statewide water conservation framework is now, is what directs all the activities for agencies, urban retail water providers and wholesalers. And they're working to set statewide targets. You're probably aware of a few of them. Some of them are directed at needing to meet more efficient water loss control programs for your distribution system. They're working on essentially what are going to be a water budget type type approach for water agencies to meet that considers efficient indoor water use, efficient outdoor landscape water use, landscaping for commercial, industrial, and institutional customers. And then also BMPs for industry and other commercial businesses. And, you know, some of those mandates are are still being developed, but the the way we're seeing them roll out, everybody's going to need a bit of assistance to meet them. And so one of the things the partnership has been really successful at is helping agencies meet targets. Both targets in the past, so we're in the final compliance here for the Water Conservation Act of two thousand nine, which is affectionately known as SBX seven seven. There was a regional alliance formed for those targets amongst the partnership. And if you're not familiar with that, SBX seven seven required twenty percent reduction in water use over a ten-year period between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty. Through the partnership, we've seen a thirty-two percent reduction in that ten-year period, largely because of the coordinated efforts of the partnership. So going forward, I only see more opportunities to help our agencies to meet some of the demands that the state is going to be putting in front of it.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. It really concludes the questions I had and wanted to make sure I verbalized. Any other questions thought of while I was talking? Otherwise, I'll open it up to the public. Great. Let's see if any hands go up for this one. I welcome any comments. Please stay on the line, guys, just in case any of the questions you might need to answer. And I am seeing a hand come up from Chris Coen, please.
Great. Thank you very much, Mayor Turner and Council. Pleasure to be with you tonight. My name's Chris Coen. I'm with the Sonoma County Regional Climate Protection Authority. And tonight, the RCPA would like to support Cloverdale's resolution to join the Sonoma Marin Saving Water Partnership. The partnership provides wide-ranging services and award-winning programs for residents and businesses that have helped its member communities meet and, as you just heard, exceed their commission targets and to, along with state policy, to make water conservation a California way of life. Water conservation is more than gallons saved as energy. The energy required to pump, treat, and heat water currently comprises twenty percent of electricity and thirty percent of natural gas demand in California. This is known as the Water Energy Nexus. A recent study from the UC Davis shows that water conservation programs are as effective as energy efficiency programs in reducing greenhouse gas emissions. In March, the Sonoma Climate Mobilization Strategy was adopted by the RCPA Board of Directors and its supports direct investments in GHG reducing infrastructure, including water. RCPA is also Program Manager for a new regional program called Water Upgrade Save from the Bay Area Regional Energy Network. Information on this program has been provided to staff. The program is modeled on water efficiency pace pilot that Mr. Piazza was instrumental in in conducting. And and the Water Upgrade Save program complements the robust suite of services that are offered by the partnership. So I would like to conclude by recommending that the city council approve the resolution to join Sonoma Marin Saving Water Partnership. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Chris. Any other members of the public wish to offer comment at this time? We see if any hands go up. We do Linda's iPad, as it's identified, would like to make a comment?
Yes, hi, my name's Linda Redding and I'm a resident here. And I would just ask that you would, you have a little newsletter you guys send email. Then maybe you could have a fact sheet in it that says what this organization does, how they serve us, so that we can be educated on, you know, where our dollars are going. I personally am very supportive of any energy saving type things, but it's good to have that information. And I think that there's more that we can learn than what we just heard from that very quick blurb. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you, Linda. That's two good comments in a row. I hope you're available every second and fourth Wednesday at six o'clock to join us. And I mean that, I don't, I mean that, I'm being dead serious. Anyhow, any other members of the public wish to offer any comment at this time? All right, not seeing any hands go up.
Mayor Turner, by me, I would love to provide just a little direct response to Linda's request for additional information on, you know, how the partnership benefits the residents of Cloverdale. And firstly, I I used to be a resident of Cloverdale. It's a, it's a great little town. And I'm very excited about your interest in joining. And one of the things that I'm probably most proud of in terms of what the partnership does is provides programs that that helps individuals. We, as a, you know, Sonoma Water in the lead, we run a lot of the regional programs. So we're typically working with organizations like Daily Axe or with the Sonoma County Master Gardeners and a few other organizations to bring services right to businesses and residents of Cloverdale at no cost. So, for example, we're facing a pretty severe water shortage this summer. And a lot of people that want to take action to learn what they can do at their home to reduce their water use outside often involves needing to know a little bit more about plants and landscaping or irrigation systems. And, you know, not everybody has the particular expertise for that. So through a collaboration with the Master Gardeners, we have a program called Garden Sense that enables any of the residents of Cloverdale to sign up for a free appointment. And I know COVID is still a bit of an issue, but we've got protocols in place to make it safe for a team of really highly trained master gardeners specific to additional irrigation system knowledge and plant knowledge to be able to come out and work directly with residents to kind of help them understand ways that they can easily start gaining savings in their landscape by either transitioning their irrigation system from a spray system maybe to drip, learning a little bit more about water-saving plants. Oftentimes, the impediment is Oftentimes the impediment is you don't have the, the resources to hire a designer. So the master gardeners have received training to come in and help people understand how they might want to consider redesigning their landscape and even providing sketches. So that's just one example of a program. We have a lot of different opportunities though, for you to tap into ways to reduce your water use. And I'd be happy to make sure that staff at Cloverdale has a ready list that we can get out to you so you can take best advantage of it.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Todd, looks like you got your hand up.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation you're giving and all the answers. You actually just threw out a great program piece to you that I didn't, I didn't know about having someone come out and help with the plants. I was going to ask you first off, what was different from your program than what I could get off of the internet? But you just answered that question. So the second part of my question is going to be, what kind of guarantee do you have that you're going to be focusing on Cloverdale and grants for Cloverdale when you're working with almost every single entity within a, about a 60 mile radius of us? And so how do, how do we know our $50,000 is truly going somewhere rather than us hiring someone to do the exactly what you're discussing already and focusing directly on Cloverdale?
Well, I will explain a little bit about the fees maybe first off, which is that their local program match is just that. That's money that the city of Cloverdale budgets and uses for program expenditures right in your own city. That isn't money that comes to the partnership. Secondly, the small annual fee, which is the 22,000 annually. A portion of that is already being paid for Cloverdale to get educational services to students right in your town. It's mostly focused on stormwater as a resource. So and joining the partnership, you'll be getting the full set of our water and energy education program to all of the schools in Cloverdale. And I can happily let Ryan Pedrati, who's joining the meeting tonight, speak a little bit more about that. But in terms of your specific question around grants, you know, the unique thing about grant funding is that a one agency doesn't have nearly as good a chance of securing funds as a larger collaborative approach of different agencies all pooling, usually because there's a certain amount of match required. And there's also just a lot of competition for grant funds. And so the more you can show that you're aligned with a lot of different regional entities, the more competitive you are to bring those funds in. And then it's just a matter of the commitments that each of the agencies make in terms of the individual agreements for those to ensure that the total pot of money that's coming in is equally used throughout the participating partner. So it's, it's just, you know, procedural, but it's guaranteed that a portion of what is earned from the grant would come right to your community. And it makes your dollars go further.
Thank you. All right. Thanks, Todd. Any other questions, comments? Otherwise our city manager has asked for some action. Melanie, please.
Yeah, I just have a quick question and I'm not sure if Sonoma Water or maybe Chris can answer this, but you know, two of the just most common incentives that have, you know, been utilized in the area. One is the swapping out of the toilet program, which I think we've had in Cloverdale and because Sonoma Water was able to offer it to us in the, in the last drought. And the other one is, is cash for grass. So in this scenario, if we become members and we want to do a program like that for our residents, how would you help us set up that program? And would you help us find the, the funding for the Cash for Grass program or the low flow toilet program? How would that work?
Yeah, one of the, one of the things-
And if there's another more, if there's another program example you want to use, great, but those are just the, the two of the really familiar ones.
Yeah, well, you're fortunate that we have another resource on the meeting tonight, which is Chris Cohn with our CPA.
Right.
You know, she was mentioning an on bill financing program that is kind of a one stop shop where they take care of all the administrative burden of running the program. The benefit to your residents is that the, the installation of those types of fixtures are with no out of pocket cost. And the savings that's generated by installing them is sufficient enough to cover the costs as a small charge to the bill over time. And I'm happy to let Chris talk more about that. And then I can speak to my experience in having, you know, piloted that program previously with another city.
Exactly. Paul was our, our initial champion on this effort. And he gave just a very concise and, and precise description of the program. We do have an indoor package that includes a high efficiency toilet, showerheads and air raiders. That's sort of the heart of the program. And we're coming online with a new revised outdoor suite of measures to help with outdoor water savings as well. The really sweet thing about this is that the Water Upgrade Save Program allows the customer to make some of these initial investments and pay for them through the savings that they accrue. But it is also totally complementary to traditional programs. And everything that the partnership is doing fits in really well. So there's a nice blending of services there that would actually open up and expand the opportunities for Cloverdale residences and businesses to achieve water conservation.
And if you should have, you know, if you choose to do or implement more what I would say, traditional rebate incentive type program to try and incentivize people to change fixtures to higher efficiency, clothes, washers, toilets. We don't provide funding for that other than, you know, what I mentioned earlier about opportunities for bringing in matching grants. But in terms of the development of the programs, we have a ton of experience. I mean, we, we don't really think much about incentives as being an impediment because we have ready materials, templates, we're happy to share all of that. The beauty of water use efficiency as a profession is we're not really the reinvent the wheel type. We're, we're very well connected throughout the Bay area and frankly through the state. And we all help each other immensely. So all of those types of things are shared with new partners. We bring expertise from our staff to yours. We share anything we can to, to make that, you know, program development easier. Ultimately though, some of those decisions will want to be made by the city and then we're happy to talk further about how we can support them.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments at this time? Summer, what do you think? It's going to cost us a little money?
Honestly, from what I've heard, it's quite a bit of money. So I would just, if I was, if it was up to me, go over everything and just double check. It's something worth everyone's investment.
Thank you. Appreciate that as always. David, are you feeling pretty confident about what you've heard today? Does it coalign with how you understood it as well?
Absolutely, Mayor. I, I think, you know, the program has been, been well vetted. And, you know, even Healdsburg, just about a little over a year ago, joined the partnership and they you know, were like Cloverdale, very similar. So I think, you know, kind of, they kind of took the lead in joining because of the potential benefits of participating in, in the partnership. Not to say we should, because they did it, we should do it, but I think it, it offers similar benefits to us as a community. And again, I, I, I think, you know, that really the, the net investment is about $12,000 between what we pay now with the other portion really being embedded in our, in our budget with council having full discretion on, on what kind of water conservation measures you would like to see implemented in Cloverdale for the benefit of our residents. So that, that's really, it's another way of looking at it as a, a direct investment in our community in terms of water conservation as well as, as, as Chris Cohn pointed out, energy conservation, which is also a big expenditure within our utilities.
Okay. Todd, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize for dragging this out even longer. One more question I have is-
We're losing you a bit, Todd.
... a few years ago, everyone conserved. Is this any better yet?
So what we heard is there was water conservation a few years ago, everyone, and then you cut out. So, but we can hear you better now.
I apologize. So a few years ago, we did a water conservation. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
The whole, the whole town conserved and our water rates were, had to go up because we had conserved so much water that we were not being able to fund. At this point, I, I, how do I explain this to the public that we're going to spend their money, ask them to conserve water, and when they conserve water, are their rates going to go down or go up? Because they use so much water that we have to pay more money again. You know what I'm saying? So it's like we're spending their money to charge them more money to use even less water. Now they're still conserving. And then we're going to build more houses to use more water. And so it's, it's like, it's real tough for our public to swallow.
Yeah, well, I guess the way I would address that is just to bring the understanding that it's always the case that the less water you use, the less your utility costs are, both in terms of energy and water costs.
And the problem is, is we did that and the, and the rates had to be changed because we conserved so much that they weren't funding our water department. And so we conserved too much water. And now we're being asked to conserve again, even though we're still million, like, what was it? 170 million gallons less than we were six years ago. And we're going to talk about planning to build more houses using water. And so it's really hard for our current community to say conserve more water so we can pay, charge you more for it. And then we're going to add more people to it to use the water that you conserved. I, I, I just have a real difficult time with this and I don't know how to explain that to people.
Sorry, did you want to add something before he answered the question, Gus? Or did you want to add something after?
Please, Mr. Mayor, I, I didn't hear you. You know, for me, it's not about the water, water usage. You know, the water bill is to pay for the infrastructure. Let's face it, delivering the, the finished product to the homes and, and making it a, a, a product that can be used. You know, I view this partnership as a more regional approach to saving water. Like Melanie had said, at one point we had the swap out program. We had the Cash for Grass. So it's partnering with, with other programs that as a single city, we would never be able to do on our own. But on a regional approach, we can do it. And, and you're absolutely right, Todd. It's, it's very difficult to explain to people and they come up to me all the time while we're conserving water and you're raising our rates. And I just tell them it's, it, you know, it's about the infrastructure. You know, the water flows down the river, we get it for nothing. We treat it and then we sell it to you. And, and, and the problem is getting the product to your house. So that's what they're really paying for. Thank you.
Thank you, Gus. Any additional comments to Todd's question? Otherwise I'll let Todd either decide that he's heard what he needs to hear or ask anything further.
I'm good, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. All right, you guys, we have some, some direction to give staff. I don't know if there's a formal motion here either.
Did, did we want to open this up for the public to ask questions?
I did.
You did? I lost track.
That's okay. But I, I mean, I, you know, I'm, I'm happy to see if anything's come up since we've had additional deliberation. Feel free to raise your hand. If you want to add anything in here, one once.
Mayor, if I-
Go twice. All right.
We, we are asking-
Go right ahead.
Mayor, members of council, we are, we are asking council to take action tonight. If, if you support us moving forward, there's a, there's a resolution in, in your packet that would authorize, you know, membership in the Sonoma Moran Water Saving Partnership and enable me as your city manager to, to execute that, that memorandum of understanding with Sonoma Water. So we're, if, if council agrees and supports moving forward, our recommendation is to adopt the resolution this evening.
David, when you finish your negotiate, sorry, Melanie, I apologize real quick. When you finish your negotiations and you've completed your MOU, will we see it for final approval?
The, the action tonight would, would authorize me as your city manager to, to execute the MOU. But if, if we can, you know, if there's a future direction, I mean, of course, we, we could bring it back, but that's what we're asking tonight. And certainly, you know, be happy to, you know, share the, the final MOU with, with council. You know, what, once it's executed, if, if you feel comfortable with moving forward this evening.
Yeah, mine was just a procedural question. So I mean, I, I leave that to the, to the will of the council, whether they want to see it come back. Mine, mine was just purely procedural.
Then, Mr. Mayor, just a, a comment that I'd be happy to offer the resolution by title only. But I, I'd like to support this and see us move forward. And, you know, I think, you know, on a different night when we were discussing, you know, water rates versus our challenges around, around development and our, you know, our, our regional housing number requirements, you know, I asked a, a question. And I was pretty much busting, you know, staff's chops with it. And it's that, you know, this is just like the gas tax for paying for roads. Here we are, you know, more, we're, we're trying to get people to drive less, use public transportation, buy more efficient cars. And so we're watching, you know, the gas, the, the revenue from our gas tax go down. And we still need to, to pave the roads. And we, we, we have a really dysfunctional relationship with how we use and view water and where we really need to be regarding adequate workforce housing, adequate people here, you know, wa- populating our downtown and, and supporting our businesses. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a real, it's, it's a, I think it's a challenge that, you know, almost every city in California grapples with is that how do we continue to have the development that, that we need to be economically viable and then also, and then live within our resources budget? And I think that get, get, changing our relationship with water, making water conservation a way of life. It's this, this initiative gets us closer to that. And I know I'm going to offer the resolution, but I see that Councilmember Walter has his hand up, so I'll-
Well, I just wanted to point out that per the staff report, the, the cost is not to exceed 55,000. So as far as staff bringing it back to us on, on an FYI basis, I'm fine with that. But they're not going to exceed 55,000 without coming back. So that's all.
Okay.
I'd be happy to, yeah, I'd be happy to offer the item by, by title only. A resolution, the city council of the city of Cloverdale authorizing membership in the Sonoma Moran Saving Water Partnership, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a Sonoma Moran Saving Water Partnership memorandum of understanding to provide regional solutions for water use efficiency.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion from Councilmember Bagby, a second from Councilmember Walter. Irene, please.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb?
Nay.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
And Mayor Turner?
Aye. Okay, that is going to take us to, and thank you, everybody, for the presentation. Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Chris. Thank you. Oh, one more time. I'm sorry. It's the Sonoma Water, but I know you said it. Forgive me.
Paul.
Paul, thank you, Paul. We really appreciate your time this evening and, and thank you for being here with us. So that's going to take us to item- That's going to take us to item number 12, Amendment to Ordinance Prohibiting the Use and Sale of Disposable Food Service Ware and Other Products Containing Polystyrene Foam. David, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council. The, the, this item is brought forward by Zero Waste Sonoma. Unfortunately, we, we don't have with us Vice Mayor Cruz this evening, who is also the chair of Zero Waste Sonoma. But Zero Waste Sonoma, it, you know, formerly referred to as the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency, is the joint powers agency that's, mission is, is really to divert solid waste from our landfill and to promote reduction in reuse and recycling in our community to preserve capacity in our landfill. Early in 2018, 19, the, the Board of Directors of Zero Waste facilitated a model polystyrene reduction ordinance based on the fact that polystyrene doesn't, is not currently recyclable and contributes to- i- is not currently recyclable and contributes to, uh, our, our, our landfill. The draft ordinance was, uh, presented to council and, uh, the, the direction of council initially was to do outreach with our, with our business community, uh, which we, we did through, uh, letters and working with our, our Chamber of Commerce. Uh, the ultimately resulted in adoption of an ordinance. And I want to note that the agenda report indicated that the, uh, Cloverdale City Council adopted the model ordinance on, on January twenty-second, uh, twenty twenty-one. Uh, that was an error and I made that error that the ordinance was, uh, uh, originally introduced on, uh, January twenty-second, twenty twenty, and subsequently adopted on February twelfth of, of, uh, the same year, twenty twenty. So that ordinance has been in effect in, for, for, uh, a, a little over a year now. Uh, since the drafting, the original ordinance, uh, Zero Waste Sonoma has, uh, recommended, uh, 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 an amendment to that ordinance to prohibit, uh, what's referred to as PFAS or PER or polyfluorale alkal substances. And tonight, joining us from Zero Waste Sonoma is, uh, Sloan Pagal, the Zero Waste Program Manager. And she's going to walk through some proposed amendments to, to the adopted ordinance. Uh, I've reviewed those, um, and provided those, those also, those amendments to our city attorney. They're relatively minor, but they're important, uh, because of the concerns about, uh, the impacts of PFAS and food service products, uh, to one's health. So with that said, I'll, I'll turn it over to, uh, happy to introduce, uh, Ms. Pagal tonight. And, uh, she'll walk you through a presentation overview of the proposed, uh, amendment of the polystyrene ordinance. Sloan, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, for the introduction. And thank you, councilmembers and Mayor Turner, for having me tonight. Uh, my name is Sloan Pagal and I'm the Zero Waste Program Manager with Zero Waste Sonoma. We are the Joint Powers Authority managing solid waste programs and reporting in Sonoma County, of which Cloverdale is a member jurisdiction. So this evening, we are introducing an amendment to the original ordinance that was adopted by the agency board in January of this year, um, incorporating a new limitation regarding this material of concern. Next slide. Uh, as an overview, this slide covers the provisions in the original ordinance. Um, it prohibits the sale and, uh, sale use and distribution of food service ware and other products containing polystyrene foam. It requires service ware to be locally recyclable or compostable. However, compostable plastics and PLA line products are not accepted. Um, it also requires the provision of accessory items, including single-use straws, lids, utensils, and to-go condiments on, on customer requests only. And it prohibits polystyrene foam at city departments, facilities, and lessies. Uh, I would like to clarify that this graphic has since been updated to more accurately reflect the ordinance language, which requires that the straws, lids, and cutlery should also be recyclable or compostable locally. So those images are, um, updated in our, our materials that we do have online. So, and my apologies that they're, um, still on that slide, but, uh, next slide. Additionally, there is an optional fee for single-use disposables or credit for customer reusables that restaurants may decide to implement. And this was included to encourage the reuse, uh, the use of reusables. Next slide. So as you have seen in the staff report, the primary change to this ordinance is the addition of a prohibition on the use of food service ware items with added PER and polyfluorale alcohol, chlorinated alcohol substances, also known as PFAS. Um, these chemicals are commonly used in the production of fiber-based food service ware for the purpose of liquid increased resistance. Unfortunately, PFAS, also known as, uh, forever chemicals, persist in waterways as well as the environment due to the use of, um, common consumer products. Um, PFAS are linked to liver and kidney cancer, decreased fertility, thyroid problems, and decreased immunity. Several states have passed legislation limiting PFAS, not only in food service ware, but also in other items, which you will see on the next slide. Um, and finally, there are many private companies, um, including Whole Foods, Trader Joe's, Chipotle, uh, Panera Bread and Taco Bell that are taking steps, um, to phase out these chemicals from their supply chains. Next slide. Um, in California, we have banned PFAS in cosmetics, uh, personal care products, and firefighting foam. And there is currently legislation, uh, on banning it from purport as well. Uh, next slide. Um, this side shows the changes to the model ordinance definitions, which were done just for clarity within the ordinance language. Uh, next slide. Um, specifically, the definition of compostable was updated to reflect the limitations of what is accepted in the compost facilities that accept material from Sonoma County. So we, we did remove the word biodegradable, which is, uh, actually very confusing, um, to, to consumers and members of the public. Um, so now we will be using the word compostable instead. Next slide. Uh, this mattress shows our local watershed, which will benefit from a, a reduction of products containing PFAS as well as polystyrene foam and single-use food service ware that commonly show up, uh, in litter, as litter in our waterways and beaches. Next slide. Uh, so at this point, there are five jurisdictions that have adopted the ordinance or portion of the ordinance. And we are working closely with the other cities as well as the county to get this adopted, um, as consistently as possible by this fall. Is the hoop. And next slide. Here you see the four jurisdictions that have adopted the foods, foodware portion of the ordinance and the plan for bringing the amendment to each of those, uh, city, city councils. And then for those six jurisdictions that have yet to adopt, they will be hearing the ordinance with the inclusion of the, this amendment language. And the county is scheduled for a workshop on this item, um, June eighth, with a vote from the Board of Supervisors, scheduled for August twenty-fourth. Um, and we're also working closely with, uh, Santa Rosa as well, um, to bring that back to council within the next couple of months. Next slide. Uh, this is an example of an educational material developed for restaurants. Again, we have updated this one to specify that PFAS are not accepted. And we do have a dedicated webpage with bilingual content where folks can go to download these pages. Next slide. So our approach has been reusable is best, recyclable and fiber compostable are great, and polystyrene foam is going away. Next slide. Next slide. Uh, next slide. And this is a supplier list, which we have made available just to make it easier for food providers to find compliant products. Uh, we also have a separate flyer that applies to retailers that shows non-foodware alternatives to polystyrene foam. Next slide. Uh, at this time, we are working through the second phase of outreach, uh, where we are conducting, um, business outreach, sending notification letters to affected businesses. Um, and we have created a comply, a complaint form on our website for the public to submit information, um, about businesses that they have seen out in the public that are, are using or selling non-compliant products so that we can then offer technical assistance. Next slide. And so when it comes to enforcement, Zero Waste Sonoma is, uh, hosting that complaint form, um, conducting the initial assistance. And we will issue up to three violation letters as complaints are received, as well as phone calls and site visits. If, uh, non-compliance persists, then we will turn, uh, over our communications with the business to the city, who would then be responsible for issuing fines if they decide to do so. Um, however, depending on the city's timeline, we will not be implementing the enforcement until the specified date. And I do believe we are looking at a January first, twenty twenty-two date here, Cloverdale. Um, so in the interest of public health, further protection of the environment, and to maintain the ordinance consistency across jurisdictions, it's recommended that the council adopt this amendment. And next slide. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Awesome. Thank you, Sloan. Please hang around. I'm sure there will be a few. Um, council, anybody like to go first? Okay, I will go ahead and start us off then. Uh, one of the things I'm concerned about is January twenty twenty, we say no more polystyrene. February twenty twenty, we bring that and make it official. Um, do you have reason to believe everybody ran and bought PFA? And now I've got restaurants with ten thousand units of that, and we're going to come out and say, well, that ain't going to work either.
Um, yeah, it's, it is up to the city on when we'd like to start the enforcement. Um, I have a draft, um, retailer letter, uh, notification letter ready to go out, um, as soon as this. Hopefully, if this amendment is approved, we can include the PFAS language. And if not, uh, we can send it out without that language, um, to notify the retailers, you know, of this polystyrene, um, uh, ordinance. And, you know, if you, if you can make sure that the retailers are no longer selling it, you know, that's a, it's an important step in limiting how much of it is getting out there. Um, so that's definitely a consideration. But, uh, you know, we do want to give those businesses time to use up the product that they already have in stock.
Thank you. Th- th- this question is probably bigger than all of us, but I would just feel remiss if I didn't ask it. Um, it, it seems to me like these efforts are geared towards the end of the supply chain rather than the beginning. Uh, whereas going maybe towards not allowing it to be manufactured anymore, or not allowing it to be received in the state of California through distribution measures or anything like that. Can, can you comment at all on, on why we find ourselves on this approach of, of really just hitting the consumer with these type things?
Um, you know, I, I, my best guess would be that, um, the industry is very powerful and, uh, any state legislation is probably met with, um, those industry groups pushing back. Um, you know, like I said, there is legislation at the state level for, uh, restrictions on PFAS and other consumer products. Um, you know, we haven't seen a, a full-on ban of polystyrene come through quite yet. Um, but it is something that I think continues to be discussed. And I mean, hopefully at some point, we can, um, see that happen.
Thank you. And then, uh, in, in a few different presentations, I've heard comments regarding improved public health. And, um, when, when, when you speak about how retail or, or manufacturing may have a little bit more resources available for lobbying or things of that nature, wh- what efforts have been made to approach the healthcare industry for funding in these eff- and, and these types of things, which would, if, if we're talking about public health, that also translates into reduced patient day rate, re- uh, reduced return visits to hospitals. And for the healthcare system, even having a hospital is herculeanly expensive. So if you're making efforts in which that would make the entire public more healthy, I would think the healthcare industry has some skin in that game and you might be able to, uh, create some alliances or, or, or get some funding out of that. Again, I might be asking questions that are bigger than us all here. Um, but, but I just, again, I would feel remiss if I didn't bring it up.
I, I think you're absolutely right. Uh, you know, that's actually, um, who, the members of the public who were involved in healthcare were the ones that really brought this to our attention late last year. Um, and they were the ones who were making public comments, uh, on this item at the Santa Rosa Climate Action Subcommittee. Um, so they are, they are making their voices heard about this, um, and elevating it to, to higher levels of government. So I do think that that's, um, something that, that, you know, the state is going to consider because, you know, these collective voices are, um, coming forward. And of course, healthcare is, is a loud voice, so.
Excellent. Thank you, Sloan. I appreciate you answering my questions. Councilmembers, any other additional questions or comments before I open it to the public? Gus, please.
Thank you. Well, you know, I'm just curious, uh, this came before us, uh, I believe it was last year. And, um, you know, we were on a campaign to educate our restaurants and people that were using, uh, containers. Have we heard any feedback from them on their thoughts on how this is going? I mean, I know a couple of the restaurants, when I get takeout, they've changed from styrofoam to, um, like a press paper. Um, so, uh, are most of our restaurants in compliance now, doing it on their own? Or haven't we visited them?
You know, um, we were ready to get going with a lot more in-person outreach, of course, last year. Um, and I believe right in February is when, um, the council did adopt the original ordinance. And we had, you know, a plan in place which quickly got derailed, uh, due to COVID. But, um, you know, I'm thinking throughout the summer, we will be able to maybe host, uh, a Zoom or an in-person, um, you know, through the Chamber of Commerce or, or other, um, industry group out there, restaurant group, um, so that we can be there to answer questions, show them the products, and, um, you know, help them through this process.
Thank you.
I'll get myself off mute here. Don't want to have that mistake tonight. Any other questions or comments from council? Summer, come on now. I'm calling on you all night tonight. Yeah, we can hear you. Okay.
I did have a question about if we did adopt this amendment. Like, if one of our local businesses was to get fined for using these products after we committed to not use them, where does the money go?
Thank you.
Good question. Um, yeah, so I, I do want to just kind of reiterate that, that our focus is going to be on technical assistance. Um, you know, we will give, we will receive a complaint from the, from the public through our form. We will then reach out, um, we will send a letter, we will call or actually visit the business in person. Um, you know, take a look at their supply, let them know what options are available. Um, if we receive another complaint, um, we will kind of follow up. If that happens three times, then we will hand it off to the city. And it's really up to the city to decide if they want to levy that fine. Um, and so the fine would, would go to the city.
Thank you.
Melanie? Thank you, Summer. Melanie?
Great, thank you. Yeah, I guess, you know, if the business gets three strikes against them, I don't think they'll be qualifying for their green business certification. So that's one, that's one way. But I just, you know, just a, a couple of comments, since we're discussing the item, just the, the changes that, um, Zero Waste has brought. It, it, I appreciate that they're science-based and that they were the result of the, of input from, um, from, from the public and, um, and specifically, you know, healthcare professionals coming with their expertise. Because just like, um, our mayor, I worked for Kaiser and I've also worked for UC San Francisco. And some of the folks who, man, literally worked for like the head of neuroradiology and, um, a cancer, a world famous cancer doctor. And, um, that cafeteria was one of the worst places you'd ever want to get food. Or, um, and they certainly hadn't gotten the gospel of, um, disposable or, or, um, compostable, uh, you know, takeout. Um, so sometimes I, I'm glad to see that there are members of the healthcare community who are now advocates for healthier eating and healthier containers, because that's definitely, um, something that mainstream, um, healthcare hasn't really been in touch with. But, you know, I think that it just seems to me, one of, one of the reasons that you're seeing ac- action and activity on this subject at the grassroots level is that we're the ones who have to deal with the trash at the river. We're the ones who, you know, see styrofoam, plastic bits, um, people leaving to-go containers, you know, the, the litter on the side of the freeway. We're the ones who have to deal with it. And there is a huge, powerful lobby in Sacramento that prevents the, the plastic bag ban. Um, prevents the, the polystyrene ban. And it's really, you know, local municipalities and local residents like us who are saying, you know what? Um, we're tired of that cost of the cleanup and the effects on our environment being externalized onto us because that's, that's essentially what this is. We also have to remember that this is a hu- a huge piece of this is diverting, um, mass from our, um, our landfill. It, you know, polystyrene, it, it, it just go, you know, and plastic utensils and stuff like that, they just go into the landfill. And we only have, um, a certain number of years left to the life of our local landfill. And when that resource is gone, you know, we were talking about water rates going up. Um, we're going to, you know, we're going to think back longingly at the days that our bill only went up ten dollars a month or something like that, when we don't have a local landfill anymore. So I think it's, you know, vitally important that we go ahead and we continue to support this effort and that we, um, support the recommended changes that Zero Waste has brought to us this evening.
Thank you, Melanie. Todd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As much as I agree that this is a, a good idea, I also think that this is along the lines of what you said, Mr. Mayor, of almost being the low-hanging fruit, that you're attacking the wrong person. And we're, we're dragging ourselves out of a pandemic, and the hardest hit out of everyone in the world is restaurants. And the last thing I wanna do is not only, uh, take away the costs for, that they've already paid for certain things, but then turn around and have an added cost, because you know that everything that they're going to have to purchase now is gonna cost even more money, be more expensive. And, and right now is the wrong time. I think that you bring this back in a year and everybody's getting back on their feet, great. But when seventy percent of the restaurants in America have failed or are on the verge of failing. The last thing I wanna do is, uh, tell them, hey, you know what, what you just did for us is wrong now again, and you're gonna have to go pay more money. So I think it's the wrong place, wrong time.
Thank you.
I was under the impression that we get to set the, um, the end date. Is that correct? That when it's gonna go into effect?
Uh, yes, that's, that's right. And maybe, uh, Mr. Kelly could speak to that.
Gus, we did, Councilmember Walter, I'd have to take a look. I, I mean, the way the ordinance is written would be upon adoption. It, it would, it would take back. I don't think there's a, uh, a, a date set that in, in the future that it would then become effective. Uh, with that said, and as indicated by, by Ms. Pagal, uh, the, the first course of action would be uh, you know, education of the community. Uh, you know, but I, I do wanna point out that, uh, of course, you know, the, the, the ordinance does pro- provide for a one-year grace period. So it enables the, the business, uh, owners to, 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 to phase out, uh, PFAS-related products uh, that they're currently u- utilizing for, for food service. So there, there's, there wouldn't be a, uh, you know, it's not, it's, upon adoption, the ordinance would become effective. Uh, but again, it sets forth the one-year grace period for when it would ultimately, you know, be subject to, to enforcement. Um, and, uh, City Attorney Tanaguchi, is, is there anything you'd like to, to share with council about the, uh, the provisions within the ordinance around its effective date?
Absolutely. Thanks, David. So, Councilmember Walter, to answer your question, if, if it's council's desire to push this out sixty, ninety days, that's definitely, uh, a revision that can be amended, um, to the ordinance as written. So if you wanted to make a motion to let it affect, it can be sixty days, ninety days. Um, and as the city manager just mentioned, there is a one-year, um, grace period at the discretion of the city manager. And so council's well within its right to provide, you know, further direction to the city manager. Um, you know, its intention to exercise that grace period, um, for businesses if they so choose.
Well, well, councilmember Lance brings up a very good point about the restaurant industries being the hardest hit. And, um, uh, based on the fact that we didn't get out there and do the educational piece that we were supposed to do. Um, you know, I'm not so sure that I'm gonna be able to support this at this time. I'd like to see it pushed back just a little further. So, I don't know if I'm going down the wrong road or not, but.
Well, can we all agree that, um, you, you know, first, first of all, um, most of our, I think, most of our restaurants are already going in this direction? I mean, we got to go food from Poppets tonight. And, um, it was in, it was in, um, uh, recyclable plastic salad containers. And it was in, um, the, the pressed paper. And then today, when I was at Plank, um, they're, they've gone to all, um,
Right.
You know, wood products. So I mean, uh, you know, I think that the, I, the, the restaurants are already adopting this. And they're already aware of this as an, as an industry. So, I mean, I have no problem with saying that, because, you know, what we're being asked to do tonight is possibly, um, just schedule the next reading, mod- modify the ordinance as recommended by, you know, really, really good input and as um, enumerated by, by Sloan. Um, we're saying, you know, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to reschedule that first reading. That could be several months down the road. And then within that time, a- as soon as we do that, we would say that they have a year to use up their stocks. I think that that's really reasonable. And I think that it, you know, in, just realistically speaking, this is Sonoma County, you know? I mean, I remember a, a couple of years ago, getting a couple of the, um, um, ditch the straw um, campaign cards and going to, um, El Malcajete, handing those over to Tina. And she's like, this is a great idea. This'll actually save us money. So we only give out straws to people who actually ask for them. And they were just really responsive to it and really open to it. And, you know, I, I think that a, a lot of our, our restaurateurs are, are very, um, for, very progressive. They're entrepreneurs. They adapt to what their customers want. And this is, um, that's a marketing point for them. Um, because, you know, they're, they're restaurant owners in Sonoma County, and this is where innovation happens. So, um, I think it's actually, um, a selling point for them and, and not a hardship. So I, yeah, so I would be very happy with, um, bringing this back for, um, a, a first reading. Um, and of course, we could schedule a few months out and then saying, um, that it's going to be, you know, be act- it's gonna start, you know, January twenty-first of twenty twenty-two or something like that, or pushing it out a, a year. When then we have the time to get information out to, um, the restaurants, we can help them, you know, um, do the technical out- you know, Zero Waste should be able to do more of their technical outreach to them. And it, it's really, you know, it's, it's really a marketing point for them. I think it's a huge advantage for them to, to move in this direction. Because I think that there's so much demand from the public to see, first of all, we don't need to see that material going into our landfills and resulting in a skyrocketing rate sooner than we really need to. Um, and it helps them to market to their, their customers. So I don't see it as a hardship at all.
Thank you. Re- real quick, I, I do see us kinda shifting towards deliberation, which is totally fine, but I haven't opened it up to the public yet and kinda heard any of that input. And, and we're kind of speaking on their behalf as we deliberate here. So I did see Nina was on. She might have something kinda prepared. She may not. I don't wanna put her on the spot. Um, but any member of the public, we're, we're kinda talking about restaurants and the, the, you know, different impacts of this particular amended ordinance. Uh, feel free to raise your hand if you have any comments. Going once, going twice. Okay, Linda. Linda, please.
So, um, I guess I would just have to say that, um, you know, Homo sapiens have pretty much killed this planet. So anything that we can do to mitigate the damages that we're causing with all PPOFs, uh, there's so many things. Um, I think it's a great plan. Um, I'm very also empathetic to what our local, um, restaurant businesses have been going through. And so m- making a reasonable timeframe and maybe even putting some kind of a clause in there that if whoever's responsible for getting this education out to them doesn't do it, it even extends the deadline farther. Um, but I think we have to look at what is the right thing to do for, um, where we live in our planet. And I'm really, I, part of the reason why I wanted to stay until this point is because I thought you were gonna relax the restrictions. And so I would have had to object to that. So I'm really happy to see that you're, um, going in a direction that is, in my opinion, doing the right thing for the world. So thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Appreciate your comment. Um, anybody else from the public like to raise their hand at this time? Seeing none. Okay, I'll bring it back to council. I know I had, um, I think Sloan wanted to add something to what was said. And then I've got, uh, Councilmember Lance with his hand raised as well. Um, Sloan, has your hand come down, or is there something you wanted to add?
I was just hoping to offer, um, another alternative that we haven't really had the opportunity for any jurisdictions in Sonoma County to explore. But I know that our neighbors in Marin County are kind of going in this route right now for the same reasons that have just been discussed. Um, and that is to kind of look at a phased approach with the first phase being the accessory items on request only. Um, and the reason being is that, uh, first of all, it will save the business money if, um, you know, they are offering these items on request only. Um, and there really doesn't seem to be any drawbacks for implementing that portion of the ordinance sooner rather than later. Um, so I just wanted to offer that as, um, uh, something for the, for the council to consider.
Thank you, Sloan. Mr. Lance, please.
Thank you. I just wanna make it clear that I'm not against this, but I am against the timeframe. And that it needs to be pushed way out because the businesses are really struggling right now. And, uh, to Melanie's point, I agree, like Papa's Pizza, we get that all the time. And we know that they've already, a lot of these restaurants have already worked their way into it, especially the established restaurants like Papa's. Um, but if, if this was, uh, already being, you know, done so well and it's almost a moot point, then why is it such a high priority here? So that means that there are restaurants here that are barely making it, that are trying to use up what they have, or buying the cheaper materials to get by. And I do not want to hurt them. I have one of my closest friends just raised over thirty million dollars to go directly to restaurant workers because they had no money and they were failing so fast. Uh, uh, he has TV shows that are directly giving payments to businesses that are failing, all the money. And so the last thing I want to do is take more money out of their pockets at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Lance. Are, are we aware, and I, and I had asked this, David, I know it's a hard question to answer in the timeframe that was allotted. But we, are we aware of anybody in Cloverdale utilizing this product? Nina, if you happen to know anybody, if anybody can help shine some light on whether we have anybody using this product right now. I would find that tremendously helpful.
Be careful, Mr. Mayor, of shaming businesses.
I'm not trying to shame. I, I just wanna guess or know. I don't need to know who they are. I just wanna guess or know. That, and, and if, if that's inappropriate, then, yeah.
No, that's fine. I just didn't want it to be specific businesses.
Yeah, fair enough.
Uh, uh, Mayor, I, I, um, it's, you know, specific to the proposed amendment that pertains to the, the PFAS. Uh, I, I'm, I'm not clear on what extent the business community, our restaurant community is using products with, with that, uh, that ingredient. Uh, again, you, you know, council has already adopted the, the, the polystyrene ordinance. You know, this is an amendment that would, uh, uh, include the PFOS-containing, uh, materials. Um, so I, I, I know there's been, um, great progress made by our business community in phasing out polystyrene products. Uh, I, but I, but I, I haven't evaluated, uh, to what extent they can, business community and particular restaurants uh, utilize PFAS. Uh, so I, that, that would be something that we would need to, to look at more, more, more carefully, more closely. Uh, i- i- if you'd like us to do that. And again, I did wanna point to, um, it's, uh, page two hundred and ten of your agenda packet. Uh, it's section eight dash fourteen dash oh eight oh, the exemption. Uh, thi- this does allow, uh, the, the ci- the city, the city manager or is designated to exempt the food provider or retail vendor or special event promoter, uh, from the requirements of this chapter for a one-year period. Uh, if it would create an undue hardship or, or practical difficulty, uh, to, to the person or, i- i- or entity. Uh, it does request that the, the entity, uh, requests that exemption in, in writing or that waiver in writing. Um, but it, it does provide for the opportunity to address, you know, specific concerns of the, of our restaurant community. Uh, to, to seek an exemption for a period of one year, which, you know, would provide, uh, a transition period uh, for them to, to come in compliance should council wanna move forward with it, with the ordinance.
Okay. And, and if we got the coun- if, if we got the ordinance on the books, so in theory, first reading tonight, second reading at a future date. Ultimately, we as a council let you, the city staff, know how much teeth we wanted to have until such a time that we're ready to greatly enforce it, moderately enforce it, or whatever the case may be. It, it sounds to me like even by getting this on the books, we would have an opportunity to establish our own timeline in which we wanted to start assigning teeth to it. Or, or giving it any level of enforcement or, or anything like that. Did, did I understand that, that correctly?
Mayor, that's, that's accurate. Um, as, uh, Ms. Pagal shared, uh, with the council. You know, enforcement would really begin with education first and foremost. Uh, the, you know, I could see, see, you know, again, assuming council supports the introduction of the ordinance tonight and ultimately adopts it. Uh, begins that one-year timeframe, you know, the education process is gonna start. It's already underway in reality. Uh, but then, uh, you know, through that process, if there is someone that's not in compliance, a business entity, uh, they're gonna be, they're gonna be visited by, uh, Zero Waste staff. And, and I know, working with them, they, they really use, uh, they're very solution-oriented and, and trying to find, uh, uh, products that meet or meet or comply with the ordinance. Uh, by providing, you know, the, kind of as you're speaking to, that those, uh, producers that, uh, are responsible that are not, are providing those alternative products that don't have the, uh, banned or, 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 uh, not, you know, prohibited substances. And, and that takes time. And so, uh, you know, that, that, that again, would kind of add to that one-year timeframe. And then ultimately, you know, should, should there be a violation or determine that there's a violation, the, the ordinance does set forth, you know, what those, what those, those penalties are, uh, in section eight dash fourteen dash one hundred. So that would be kind of a last resort, you know, after going through the education process with, with, with the members, uh, that maybe who are violating the, the ordinance. Uh, to the point where we got to, uh, a- actually, you know, issuing citations or violations.
Okay, one last very pointed question. So we, we, again, same, same hypothetical. And, uh, three months from now, Todd receives a very detailed, very compelling letter about why a business needs an exception. He could bring that to our attention and we could authorize that exception for a period no more than one year, one year at a time, or as long as we see fit.
Uh, I, I'd probably rely, uh, for some guidance from, uh, Trevor, but the way I, I look at it uh, is, 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 you know, for a one-year period. Uh, and, and, and my interpretation of that is, you know, upon adoption. Um, so we'd have to look at the, technically, the, the ordinance, if it got adopted, becomes effective thirty days uh, after, uh, second reading. And so we, we'd have to look closely at that effective date and when that one-year period, uh, i- i- then comes into play. Is it upon that effective date or is it upon adoption?
Okay, okay.
And, Mr. Mayor, I know I had asked this question, uh, a year or so ago. But there is no type of buyback, uh, program, uh, set up with this, is there? If a restaurant's having a hard time and they financially cannot afford, uh, to go out and order the, the new product, uh, there's no mechanism where you can buy the inventory back from them that they have. We established that, I think, in February of last year, correct?
Yeah, I, you know, uh, with all due respect, Councilmember, you know, I think that's what the year timeline is for. I mean, how many people in, you know, in a local restaurant stock their to-go, you know, their to-go packages? They ha- how, they, where, where do they have room to store a year's worth of to-go packaging?
Well, well, you know, and, and, and I'm thinking about the restaurants in town as I make my way down Cloverdale Boulevard into the plaza. And I've had takeout from just about all of them. And, and I don't know that anyone is, is, is still using the old products, you know? So, maybe the Seven Eleven or the Chevron, that I'm not sure of. Um, but, you know, the restaurants, I think, have pretty much already conformed.
Well, thankfully, Taco Bell is taking the lead on this issue and phasing it out. So we can always look to Taco Bell.
You don't go there, do you?
No.
They're good, but, uh,
I don't judge, though. I don't judge.
Okay.
Mr. Tanaguchi, please.
Mr. Mayor, I, um, yeah, David asked me to go through and from my opinion on, and doing just a quick read. There is, um, a provision in here which allows the city manager to extend beyond the one-year and additional year exemption terms. Um, from what I can tell, and, and again, this is, um, just kind of my quick read through it. There doesn't appear to be limitation language. The only limitation is that before a business's one-year exemption uh, exemption period expires, that they return for an additional one-year approval at the discretion of the city manager. Um, and the way I read this is that, uh, could continue for a significant amount of time depending on the circumstances. So, um, I don't see a restriction in here that it's solely for one year. Um, what I do see is that there is a requirement that the business return before the expiration of their one-year exemption to receive an additional one-year exemption. Um, and the way I'm interpreting this right now is that could continue theoretically for, uh, multiple years.
Thank you, Trevor. I appreciate that. I'll just kinda add my last little comments and then I'll turn it over to you guys to do with what you will. But it, it seems like there's a level of flexibility in here. Um, I, I completely relate with the comments concerned about the restaurants, and I find my- And I find myself, you know, just, just a little bit concerned is the only word that comes to mind, but I can't think of a better one. And it's only because I don't know. And I've said this so many times, I hate not knowing what I don't know. And not knowing if a single restaurant, just yes or no, uses this item in Cloverdale, it's just something that's just not sitting well with me because I don't know what I don't know. But I'm hearing a lot of flexibility. I'm hearing an opportunity to support an initiative that will help landfills that have an indirect and direct effect on cost. And I'm also hearing a ton of autonomy that if we have a restaurant that truly needs to come out, or a retailer, or anything for that nature, that truly has to come out and ask for help, we still have local authority as a council in which to offer that help and do so in a way that still includes education, still includes commitments from zero waste to uphold their side of the bargain in this. And we still have an opportunity to treat things as case by case. That speaks to me personally, and I'll just kind of leave it at that. And, you know, we have some action before us, should anybody want to take it.
Let's see, what kind of action do you need? Just instruction to, I'd say.
We have a first reading, I think, is what's before us right now.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, go to first reading. I think that the recommendations and the updates are completely reasonable and science-based and they're the result of really good public input. So, yeah, I'd like to see us move forward with this. And if we need to push it out a couple of months for everyone's comfort, I'm happy with that.
Do I hear any further input?
So I'm supporting option one.
And the motion will require just the reading by title only.
Do you like me to go ahead and read the draft ordinance? I think it's on page 204 of our packet. Does that work?
Well, now, I need some clarification here. So if we say bring it back in a few months, do we need to read it right now? Or do we need to instruct staff to bring it back in a few months? And that might give some opportunity to figure, I mean, because I'm just trying to make sure I understand what you said, Melanie. I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, you know what I mean?
So I think what we're doing is we're supporting the draft ordinance and that we'll bring it back for a first reading. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think so. I think that's what I'm hearing. So you have support to move forward, but bring it back for a first reading and try and figure out if any, and I don't need to know who. I think it's very important what Todd said. I'm not trying to create a this person versus that person in any way. I need a yes or no, a one or a zero, an open or a closed. Do I have these products in Cloverdale right now? And when I can have that answer, you bring it on back. That's where I'm at right now.
The mayor, council members, what I hear is that prefer not to conduct first reading tonight to bring it back for first reading at a subsequent council meeting and say one to two months approximately, maybe more, maybe beginning of the next fiscal year for first reading of the ordinance with some additional data around the use of PFOS-related products by our local business community. Am I hearing that correctly?
That's what I've suggested. I'd like someone to.
That works for me. That works for me. And actually, I wonder if we could maybe bring Nina on and if she, if that timeframe will work for her and that she will agree that that's good timing to start reaching out to the businesses and this is something that kind of will work in her work plan.
I'd like to unmute.
You're good, Nina. We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I would like a data. I want to go to the people that need the education that I don't want to broadside my businesses.
Okay. Are you suggesting you might help us figure out if anybody's using this, Nina? Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Would one to two months from now, which means May to June, is that a reasonable timeframe for you and your organization to accomplish that?
Very possibly.
Thank you, Nina.
Yeah, and remembering that zero waste is there as a resource in education as well. They're going to, they're going to work with you to help.
I mean, I'm not going to take a big hammer. I'm going to say, let's talk about this.
Yeah.
I'm glad I'm not on video because I'm in my pajamas.
That's where I should be too. It's way past my bedtime. Well, and I kind of, I guess I take issue with the idea that this is a hammer. I think that this is one of the kindest and gentlest ordinances of its kind.
Well, and, I mean, I'm, yeah, I don't like start what polystyrene, whatever you call it in the scientific community. I hate having to deal with, what do I do with this? And I think we can couch it in very reasonable terms and with alternatives and maybe some, and maybe some resources that might be available from a, you know, these are the places that you can go to get more information and help. So.
Thank you, Nina. Sorry to put you on the spot as I've done, what, three times tonight? So thank you.
No, but if you did before and I wasn't there, I might have been changing into my PJs. Okay.
That is perfectly all right. That is perfectly all right. All right, city staff, do you have what you need for this evening?
Mayor, we understand the direction. We'll, I think it's similar to the approach that you took when we brought for the original polystyrene ordinance is, you know, conduct some outreach with our business community, get a better feel for, you know, what the impact of making this modification or amendment to the current ordinance is. And, you know, are those businesses, you know, are they using PFAS in their food service ware? So we'll get additional data and then, and then bring it back and reintroduce or bring it back for first reading for council's consideration after we've done additional data and outreach.
Excellent. Thank you.
And conducted additional outreach.
Thank you. And Sloane, thank you, thank you very much for the presentation. And I hope you don't view tonight as anything other than doing exactly what you needed to do, which was really educated us on this and allow us to make a localized approach. And so I thank you for your time and I have a feeling we'll be able to get this forward. We just need to do it appropriately as we as Cloverdale see fit, right? I mean, every jurisdiction you're going to go to, they're going to view it a little bit differently. This is how Cloverdale views it tonight. So that is by no means a reflection of your presentation, just how we're choosing to move forward. So thank you so much for your time this evening and being here with us.
No, thank you for having me.
Thank you, Sloane.
All right, that takes us away from there. So what do you guys think? We sprint to the end or does someone need to use the potty? Yeah, we're sprinting to the end. All right, you guys got it. So we're going to transition here into subcommittee reports, first of which being the Finance, Police, and Admin Subcommittee, which will meet on May the 3rd. I don't want to take away from David because he's going to bring it up here in just a minute, but we had some real in-depth discussion regarding reopening City Hall. And I know that's very important. And I invite anybody who is, you know, available to check out the recorded video of our Finance, Police, Admin Subcommittee about that discussion. And we should be able to hear some high-level updates later this evening during the appropriate agenda item for that. With that, I will now ask where we are with the planning and sustainability, please.
I believe we next meet on April 20th.
Fantastic. And that takes us to Public Works, please.
And we have not met since our last meeting and we meet again on May 25th.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Joint City Fire, please. That might be Marta. I can't quite remember. Todd, I think you're the backup here. Anyway, the Joint City Fire Subcommittee is going to meet on June the 14th at 5:30, 2021, on Zoom. You better believe it. All right, Joint City School District, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next meeting is May 17th. We haven't had one since our last meeting. And I'm also the Homeless Community Advisory Group. We had a meeting this week, yesterday, actually. It went very well. And our next meeting is scheduled for, I apologize, May 11th. Yesterday's meeting, I'll give the quick summary. It was more of a catching up. We had, you know, introductions of everyone that's involved. We had an update on homelessness by our attorneys. We had an update from the Homelessness Task Force from the county. And we had an update from Police Chief Ferguson. And then David Kelly went over an overview of what we'd already gone through with our planned goals. So what I'm hoping for is to get more information out to the public so that we can have more members of the public available. I want to find a way for us to do that, whether it's, I'm going to push it on social media, anyone else that we can get out there to, you know, put it on our website, whatever, we do this even bigger than listed in the subcommittees because there was a couple that complained about never having access to these meetings. So I really want to make sure that we make it very clear that we want the public involved in these.
Thank you, Todd. That takes us to council reports. We received council member Bagby's in writing. Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. Any additional verbal reports? Okay. I will say, as I mentioned earlier, I met with Rob, who was a, you know, a big participant in one of the previous items. So I think it's worth notating that as a meeting that I had outside of public session. I spoke with him this morning. And another kind of an update that I attended is is with the other mayors of Sonoma County, excluding the mayor of Windsor at the time. And as you may have saw, we released a press statement from the mayors. And so that was also action that I took outside of our meeting. Any other comments? Okay, thank you. Informational reports, please. I see nothing on the agenda? Okay. Legislative reports, letters of support or opposition. I see nothing on the agenda? Thank you. City manager, city attorney reports? Seeing nothing on the agenda?
No reports, Mayor.
Thank you. Status update on current impacts to water supply. I feel like we beat that to death this evening, but Mark, please, where are we?
In dire straits.
I understand. Thank you. Status update on the current emergency discussion and possible direction related to COVID-19. Mr. Kelly, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, a couple, couple of important updates relative to the current COVID-19 emergency. First, I just want to talk on some important milestones that the county has met. As of today, a total of 369,985 doses of the vaccine have been administered to county residents. So at this, at this point, almost 150,000 residents of our nearly 500,000 population have been fully vaccinated and another nearly 83,000 have been partially vaccinated. So that means about 36% of our population that are 16 and older are now fully vaccinated and over 50% have received at least one dose. So Sonoma County is performing very well, I think, in the category of being vaccinated. One of the key metrics is that we are now seeing, you know, adjusted case rates that are putting us almost in the, you know, in the, you know, we're still in the orange tier, but we're getting closer to the yellow tier. Our testing positivity rate is 1.6%, which, you know, qualifies us for the yellow tier. And likewise, our equity metric testing positivity rate also qualifies us for the yellow tier. So that's really good news relative to vaccinations. One issue of concern is that federal and state authorities have put at least a pause on the use of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. Just what you're hearing is out of an abundance of caution, even though there's been pretty significant use of the vaccine. You know, really a small number of individuals have experienced some health issues. So there's some evaluation there. County government is starting to do a transition with some offices starting to reopen in late April. And we're starting to see other jurisdictions target reopening with limited hours in early June. Based on my survey, that's what we see is our neighbor partners, city partners, kind of targeting May to early June for reopening. And with that said, the city of Cloverdale senior staff has prepared and submitted to council a reopening plan. I feel like it's a very comprehensive plan that addresses a number of important logistical issues. That draft plan was reviewed by the Finance, Admin, and Police Subcommittee at the first meeting in May, or excuse me, in April. There are some just final logistical issues that we are working out. Don't have a date certain yet, but our goal is to finalize those, address the remaining logistical issues and move forward with the phased reopening similar to our city, our other city partners within Sonoma County to ensure that we reopen safely, but we also do it in a manner that can support our community. So that's really the end of my report. With one other note, we did receive positive information from FEMA this week and CAL-ES that they have agreed to provide 100% coverage for COVID-related expenses for reopening. And so that's something we'll be looking at more closely and make sure we were able to cover those, you know, get reimbursement for those expenses that we will incur as part of reopening City Hall and other public facilities. So that concludes my report, Mayor. Happy to address any questions that the council may have. And also want to note that our police chief, Chief Ferguson, sits in weekly with Sonoma County Department of Emergency Management. And so he's also closely tracking emergency processes through Sonoma County.
Thank you, David. I appreciate the report. Counsel, any questions or comments for Dave's COVID-19 report? Okay, thank you. And because we are addressing COVID-19 and reopening in this context, I'd like to ask the public if there's any questions you may have or comments you may have. Going once, going twice. Debbie, please.
Hi, so I just want to report that we hit our milestone of 10,267 vaccines as of today, which is very exciting for us. And so far, the community has received, 69% of the community has received at least one vaccine. And that's excellent for our area. So we're on right, on the, on track and should make all of us feel a lot easier about reopening.
Thank you, Debbie. Appreciate it, as always. With that being said, I will move us on to council direction on future agenda items, please. Seeing none, before anybody changes their mind, allow me to thank city staff for another comprehensive report. I know water rates is not easy to get through. Also really appreciate the update on the COVID-19, you know, kind of where we are on the status of the emergency and everything like that. Trevor, thank you so much for joining us this evening. You were incredibly helpful and offered insight when it was very much so needed. And everyone else, thank you. Have a wonderful evening. Our next meeting will be April the 28th at 5:00 PM right here on Zoom. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Esther Lucas and I'm a 16-year resident of Windsor.